Working.
To the Thursday, February 4th, 2021, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. As usual, in accordance with the executive order N-29-20, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Please go on the county website. You can find options to join us on the computer or by the phone. With that being said, I'd like to welcome our newest Commissioner, Thomas Mulder. I Mulder, I'm sorry, I'll put an N in there. Welcome to the commission. I know you're going to do a great job. I'd also like to say thank you to Ronnie Pellegrini for her service to the Planning Commission. I think she did a great job in the time that she was here and I'm sad to see her go, but I know our paths will all cross somewhere down the road and we welcome you, Thomas. So with that, I would call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
The Commissioner Boncio.
Present.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner McHaver.
I just promoted her.
She's present.
And Commissioner Mulder.
I'm here, but for some reason it wasn't showing my screen.
We know you're here, Melanie. We hear you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're missing one Commissioner tonight, Brian Mitchell. All right, so Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, we do. You have some supplementals on this item. Item number E1, Simply Humboldt, is being continued. And it's currently on consent, so we'd ask you to pull it off consent and continue it to March 4th. There are also some supplementals for item E2, which is Sage Chronic application. And then there is a supplemental, or there are supplementals for item G1 under Old Business or Rising Goat.
Director, would you like us to just, as for housekeeping, just continue that first one on the consent calendar or with a motion on the consent calendar and that being asked to be continued would not be good enough?
That would be great, but if, before you do that, if, since we're talking about supplementals, if I could show the public something real quick?
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm going to share my screen and go to the county website. And if, where the supplementals are located, if you go to the meeting date and click on meeting details, that will open up a different screen. And this, under attachments, this area right in here, those are all the new attachments, all the new supplementals that have been received. So as we refer to supplementals, that's where those can be found for the public and also for the commission. Thank you. And yes, please do continue item number.
Before we go into the consent calendar. Okay, so, just to do some housekeeping here, could I get a motion to continue item number one on the consent calendar, Simply Humboldt LLC conditional use permit and zoning clearance certificate to the date of March 4th?
All set.
Did we get a motion in second?
Who was the motion? I didn't hear it.
It was Mike.
The mic isn't.
No, second.
To move that to the March 4th, Suzanne, a roll call vote, please.
All right, Commissioner Boncio. Commissioner Mulder.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner McHaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. So now moving on, we will go to all the items on the consent calendar and see if there's anybody who wants any of those pulled for public comment. So the next item on consent is item number two.
You've got a couple of hands. Wait, wait.
Go ahead, Thomas.
Public. Go ahead. Exactly what Mike was saying, public comments, I just, I think we skipped past that.
I'm.
We never did public comment.
Oh, geez, you're right. I didn't even see it because I went right down your, okay, thank you.
One other, one other thing.
At this time, I will open public comment for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. And we'll see what we have. It looks like we have one attendee. It says Kent, but I bet you that's Kent Swawinski, so you're first up. Go ahead, Kent. Unmute yourself.
Well, thanks for not skipping public comment. That's always appreciated. I wanted to do a little report out on the zoning administrator meeting today. I was really pleased. We had a project down in the Bimbo area, which, which probably Thomas is aware of down there, where their water usage for the project they had was probably, in my opinion, four to five times what it should have been. And John Ford worked this out with the people, even though it's still twice what it should be, in my opinion. There's going to be some oversight and the water will be hopefully preserved for Mother Nature's environment. So I wanted to do a shout out to John Ford for that particular topic. The, the rest of things seemed to be smooth. We went through without objection and I did not pull things out of, out of the consent calendar for that topic. So I also wish to welcome our new planning commissioner. And there, there's, I just want to say something. It's always been a tradition, and that's why I don't sit in a chair, Thomas, is as soon as you sit in the planning commissioner chair, you pretty well don't participate at all in the supervisor chambers. Now, there's, there's a new normal and maybe you'll do that. But I'm just letting you know kind of what the normal process has been. And I strongly support Thomas. He and I can agree to disagree on items. And, and yet we can agree to agree on one. So I, I think it's going to be a heck of an addition to the, to what you have there, so. I also wish to make it known, basically that the, that might have been my feedback there, basically that there is an opening for an at-large position on the planning commission. There was a nomination to reappoint the existing planner commissioner at large on Tuesday, but that wasn't following the policies and procedures and protocols of the supervisors. So I believe that's been tabled until the 24th or something of this month. And I'm highly saying to anybody out there who wants to apply to be a at-large planning commissioner, take the opportunity to apply. I'm all about policy, procedure, and protocol and transparency. And, and if you have somebody you think would be a good person to be on the planning commission for at large, highly recommend you ask them to apply. And so I wish to bring those things to your attention at this time and appreciate the movie. Hopefully it will move forward quickly, but having very few things pulled out of consent and you can continue to do with, deal with your business. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. I see. One more hand up, Public 3977. Are you there?
Hi, good evening. This is Michelle Bushnell and I wanted to publicly thank Ronnie Pellegrini for all her work on the planning commission the last year or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate that. Public 7108. Are you there, Public 7108? So mute, unmute, there you go.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry and I just wanted to say something about the planning and permitting process. We're having these permits go through. Neighbors don't find about, out about what's being planned or proposed until the end of the process instead of the beginning, which creates situations where the applicant is surprised to find out about specific concerns and it creates a lot of tensions in the neighborhood. So I would like to see where the neighbors are notified when the application is made. I think it would make a much better process for dealing with permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and I apologize for missing the public comment. I don't know why I went past it. Appreciate you for catching it. So we will now move on to the consent calendar and item number two on the consent calendar is Sage Coen Conditional Use Permit in the Edersburg area. Is there anybody in the public or on the commission that would like to see this item pulled from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will leave it on the consent calendar. Item number three on consent is Bellis Heritage Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bell Springs, Garberville area. Is there anybody who wishes to, I have a hand up on the panelists. So I will pull this one. All right. Item number four is Burden Futures LLC Conditional Use Permit and special permits in the Redwood Drive, Garberville area. Does anybody wish to have this pulled from consent? Seeing no hands, we'll leave it on consent. Item number five is the George Stephen Lewis Trust Parcel Map Subdivision Extension at, in Gasaway Road, McKinleyville area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this pulled from consent? Seeing no hands, I will leave this on consent and that concludes our consent. So all items will remain on consent with the exception of item number three, the Bellis Heritage Farms LLC. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number three, which we will have public comment on?
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar except for item number three.
Thank you, Melanie. Thomas Mulder is second. Oh. Yes, Mike?
Noah beat me to it.
Yeah, I think Noah was the quickest, sorry.
Was Noah the quickest? Okay. I got a lot of screens to look at here, so I'm sorry. So Noah would be the second. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure the public understands that number one on the consent calendars in Humboldt was already pulled and moved to a March 2nd meeting, right?
Yes, we already dealt with that, so I believe that was pretty.
Just making sure the public knows that.
So I'll, I'll restate that. We, we moved item number one on the consent calendar to the date of March 4th. And we, the only one we're pulling that's on the consent calendar is item number three. So with that, we have a motion in second. Suzanne, I would ask for a roll call vote, please. Oh.
I'm going to do it from somewhere else.
Yes, we're having to. You want me to just do it?
Yeah.
We'll let the director do the, the vote. Suzanne's having some kind of technical difficulties, so.
Boncio?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Navy?
Yes.
And McFord?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. So now we will go to items that were pulled and we had one item number that was pulled and that was item number three. So I would ask for a staff report on the Bellis Heritage Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit at 4808 Bell Springs Road, Garberville area.
Thank you, Chair Boncio. I'm going to now share my screen.
Thank you.
Give me one moment. Sorry. Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm ready when you are.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Abby Strickland. I'm going to be presenting the staff report for Bellis Heritage Farms LLC, application number 11744, APN 216072010. Bellis Heritage Farms is located at 4808 Bell Springs Road, located in the New Harris area as seen on, by the blue pin on the map. The parcel is accessed by taking Alderpoint Road there in red to Bell Springs Road in green. Bell Springs Road is the last county maintained road before reaching Bellis Ranch Road in purple. And then you reach the applicant's driveway, Cabin Road in orange. The subject parcel is outlined in blue and is a legal parcel. It is zoned U for unclassified and the land use designation in the general plan is residential agriculture. The applicant is proposing, or is, the applicant's seeking a conditional use permit for 20,128 square feet of mixed light and full sun outdoor cultivation. Water will be sourced from an onsite well as well as a rainwater catchment roof system. They are projecting an annual water usage of 120,000 gallons per year, which equates to about 5.9 gallons per square foot. Energy for the project is going to be sourced from PG&E and drying and curing will occur on site. However, further processing is going to occur at a licensed third-party processing facility. This is just a, a, a quick picture of their site plan. So I've highlighted all the areas in green that are the full sun outdoor cultivation areas. The orange is the mixed light cultivation area and it's three greenhouses. All of the water infrastructure is blue, so they have eight hard-sighted tanks on their property and those are the blue circles you see on the map. Their well is the blue square on the western edge of the parcel line. The cannabis-related infrastructure is highlighted in yellow. There are two sheds that they intend to use for drying and they have a, as well as a 800-plus square foot nursery space. They also have two shipping containers on site, which will be used to store equipment and chemicals. And then the residence is outlined there in red. The project received numerous public comments, most of, almost, all of which were addressed. Some were addressed through conditions of approval. Others were addressed from a site visit that I conducted on January 6th. And then other comments were found to not be applicable to the project. And I, this chart was provided in my staff report. If the staff or the public would like to see this chart later on, I'll have it available for you. Therefore, staff recommend that the condition, or that the planning commission find the project consistent with the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the CMM LUO of, per section 15164 of the SEQUID guidelines. We ask that you make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit subject, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I will be available for comments or questions if staff or the public have any they'd like to direct toward me. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen now. So Chair Boncio, you're, back to you.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions or? All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Abby? Go ahead, Mike.
First off, I just wanted to make sure that it would be under the supplemental information one with the revised recommendations that we're talking about here.
That is correct, Commissioner Newman. I did make a revision to the conditions of approval at the request of the director and the applicant. So that was one of the submittals, one of the supplementals that was submitted to you.
Any other questions for staff? Thomas, go ahead.
So I guess supplemental, I need to look back through my emails because I might have missed the updated conditions of approval. I have this in email form, but I just want it to be on the record publicly. If I read through this packet and if there were employees found beyond the site, is it correct if that would be a violation of the permit and revocation of the permit?
I can answer that. So the supple- so first I'll address the fact that the revisions to the conditions of approval, which you may not have seen, Thomas, but they were simply just giving the applicant more time than I had stated initially to come into compliance with the SRA regulations. That was my bad. So that was just a, just an error on my part. The other conditions were edited because I again made mistakes. So that had nothing to do on the, on the question of employees. I did receive your email questioning how two applicants can run a project this side size without employees. I too had questions regarding that. And there, there were public comments that also asked that we address that. I did conduct a site visit on January 6th and not only was I looking at infrastructure, but I was also just looking to, to see if there were any employees as a complaint had been submitted and addressed that. I asked the applicant directly if they intended to have employees and they said no. And they also did not request having employees in the future. So there's nothing in the condition of approval that would grant them the ability to do so. It would require a modification to their permit. So yes, if they were found to have employees on site and that was not a condition of their permit, then they are subject to revocation.
Thank you for that because I just, I want it on record and I don't know if the applicant's available. I have quite a few questions as far as water use and also just how, how efficiently they're going to run an operation this size with this little of water and that few of employees with metric compliance and stuff like that.
The applicant is here tonight and she is available to answer any questions that the commission may have. So Ashley, if they have questions for you, you can unmute yourself to answer them.
Maybe we'll wait till after we have public comment and the applicant can come in at the end. That way, if there's any questions that come up, they can address all of them. So any other questions for staff at this point? Seeing none, I will open this up for public con- oh, go ahead, Thomas.
So I briefly discussed this via email with Cliff, but I just, I think I talked to the director about it too. The fact that the water, there's no proof right now that the water, there's no well completion report. So the condition seems to give a long time for potentially hydrologically connected water. It just, it raises a concern for me. So I don't know how we can answer that, but I just, I'm new at this, so I apologize. I'm asking lots of questions.
Nope, that's all good. Well, let's open this up for public comment and then maybe the applicant can answer some of your questions. So with that, I will open this up for public comment. And anybody who'd like to speak on this issue, I see Kent, you're number one. Go ahead. Unmute yourself.
I'm gonna have to get away from my barking dog, so. Appreciate the chance to speak on this. I did want to mention that I tried to stream this meeting so I would have access to any of the documents you have access to and maybe just my stupid computer, but it didn't happen. So I still think we don't have access to any of these modifications. I really appreciate Thomas Mulder asking these questions. It's been something that I think has been lacking for a long time on all of these projects and his questions are very relevant. It's, it's kind of disconcerting, you know, that these things would go through without being pulled by those of you at, at the DIAS. So I highly recommend in the future, if there are questions on a project, you don't wait for the public to pull one, but you folks pull it before the public has to pull one of these, so these questions can be asked. So I always, I always feel on a project like this nature and I've always said, some of your predecessors adhere to this, is that a, a picture's worth a thousand words and a site visit's worth a thousand pictures. I don't know how many of you have been out to these particular sites. Your predecessors used to take the time to go out to them, highly encourage you folks to do that. And anybody who is not doing that or is reaching out to other people who can't see the site if it's out of your area, I feel that's a little bit, I hate to use the term negligent, but I'm just encouraging you folks to do that. On this particular project, there are legitimate questions on this project and I hope you will address the concerns of your new commissioner, Thomas Mulder and, and the public. I did not pull this topic. Somebody else probably wants to speak. So I'm giving them enough time to hopefully get on here since I was, I just right last minute here hit my star nine and now I'm speaking. I always have a concern on, on the water and usage, power usage on these particular projects. And I don't know if this was one of those projects, but there, when my speaking with staff earlier in the day, where there's a whole bunch of them that are doing PG&E and they're not doing the climate responsive PG&E thing. So as far as any of these that you see that are being addressed, highly recommend that you go ahead and put that on there, that they use that, that most friendly to the environment PG&E if they are on PG&E. So again, I'm having a hard time pulling up some of my information on Graticus tonight. And so I just will go general on that one. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this particular project, which I didn't pull.
Thank you, Kent. Next caller is zone three. Go ahead, caller.
Hello? Yes. Kevin, I'm the neighbor of the Mill. And I have a big concern with the road. There's, I always maintained it by running my cat down it, clearing a nice 20-foot wide path for fire break, access, safety. And since the pillars have pulled in, they've put a bunch of drain rock on it. They didn't want me doing any maintenance. The Scotch broom is totally overgrown, the road and at least down to eight feet, it brushes on your car going through it. And the vegetative material on the road is slick and totally makes it hard to get in and out of our property. The drainage is an issue. They've several work orders called for rolling dips. Now the last one calls for a ditch that will narrow the road down even more and put in pulverics. So there's, the road's my main issue is safe now, unsafe for firefighters to come in here. Fans need to brush though we growing up on both sides of the road. There's overhanging tree limbs. At the bench and poison oak and all the other brush. So I was wondering if maybe an SRA checklist that was filed with the county and recorded to make sure that the road stays fire safe and provides good access for everybody. I have lots more comments if I could speak later or.
This, this will be your opportunity. You have one minute left.
Well, and as far as the employees, they had every harvest season since they've been there and starting in 2018, 2019 and 2020, there was a big influx of people and cars parked all along the road. Marijuana out on tables in their dry shed, trimmers sitting out in the front yard trimming. That was for the last two years when they didn't have the permit. And it's a shame that they're not contributing to the community by paying the square foot tax, which would go a long ways towards the rest of the county roads maintenance.
I have about 10 seconds, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Is the applicant with us that would like to speak and address any of the issues that have been brought up? I see anybody put their hand up, but okay. I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission for deliberation. Any thoughts?
Alan, if I may, I'm in Chair Bongio. My apologies. I would like to address the comment that was made by the public regarding the roads, Cabin Road specifically, which is the applicant's driveway. This was a public comment that came up multiple times and I've gone, I've gone through this many times with my supervisors and we take the fire safe regulations extremely seriously. It supersedes county code. And the Humboldt County Community Fire Protection Plan states that the, that driveways, which Cabin, Cabin Road meets the definition of a driveway. And driveways need to meet category road one standards. It meets the functional equivalent required for this project's needs. And it meets road category one standards, which asks that the traffic lane be 10 feet in width with two additional feet on each side. It asks that the road has a vertical clearance of 15 feet. And this is, this could address Mr. Claypool's comment about overhanging trees. There's a condition of approval that requires the applicant to adhere to the fire safe regulations. Therefore, they will be responsible for maintaining a 15-foot vertical clearance of this road. Lastly, it, the driveway exceeds 150 feet, but is shorter than 800 feet. Therefore, it has to have a drive turnout in the midpoint of the road that exceeds 20 feet in width. The road meets all of these standards, which were written for CalFire. And that just, that concludes my response to Cabin Road and the public's comment.
I'm gonna ask if the applicant, once again, would like to speak before we go too far. The directors asked me to ask if Diana Totten would like to speak. So I don't know if she knows how to put her hand up.
No.
I haven't seen her, but.
Ken.
Who's that?
Yeah.
Can you, can you hear us?
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody.
He's, he's there. Diana.
Go ahead and speak. I see you, Diana, but I'm not hearing you.
Okay. Yeah, we don't know how to make it work.
We can hear you. I can hear you, Diana.
I can hear you.
Just go ahead and speak.
This is the applicant. I'll let her speak.
Hi, so I just wanted to address the question about the water usage. And we have a plan to conserve water by planting in the ground instead of in pots and using different materials to help conserve water such as wood chips, hay, different things like that as a mulch to lock in the water. And then we also have a plan in our conditions to get the well permitted and get more storage containers as one of our conditions. Abby, I don't know if you can clarify more on that?
I would like to actually respond to Thomas Mulder's comment regarding the well. Once a well's already been drilled, it's extremely difficult to definitively say whether or not it's hydrologically connected. Staff is directed to look at the geographical information system that we have available to us and to deduce based on the distance from streams, what class those streams are and the topography to get an idea of whether or not we believe it could possibly be hydrologically connected. I, I did, I did take a look at where the well is located and I do not have reason to believe that it is hydrologically connected. And we, there is a condition of approval that states that the applicant, it's, they have to provide some sort of evidence, whether they have a hydrologist go out there and make a more factual determination than I could make. Or they, or what we do is we require that they have enough water storage to meet the forbearance needs. That is the best we can do considering that we do not have a well log. And if the director or Cliff would like to further explain this situation, then I, then I could, I'd appreciate it.
Would either.
I'll, I'll just say, I think Mr. Strickland explained that well. We will, before issuing any final permits, look at the well, look at the information associated with the well to ensure that it's not hydrologically connected. So, so that will be done.
Was there another question I was supposed to respond to?
I have a question. Could you respond to the question about no employees and the public comment that multiple employees on the site and yet you're now saying you're not going to have employees?
We've never had employees. My husband and I have always done it by ourselves and we intend to do it by ourselves. We have a plan of how we are going to spread things out and how for time for each, each part of growing the plant to where we can manage it together. And as far as the public comment, we have been in litigation for three years and it's been consistent since the first day we moved in. And so it's anything to do to stop us from getting the permit.
So what you're saying is that there hasn't been this number of employees on the site that.
We've never had employees.
You done, Peggy?
Can I add? Can I add to that question?
I, I know, I'm trying to do that, but everybody keep. Hey, Mike, I'm gonna hold you off for a second. I'm gonna finish with public comment. There's one last person that has their hand up, Jean. And then I will close the public comment and we'll come back to the commission. Sorry about that. Oh, so it looks like Jean dropped. Well, she's still there on mine. Oh, no? Well, I'll give you one last chance, Jean. Would you like to speak or not? Go ahead. Are you there, Jean? Please speak. I don't know if we have bad connection or what. Given her multiple chances here. So I'm gonna close the public comment now and bring it back to the panelists. And we had quite a few hands up. And we had quite a few hands up. Mike, you're at the top of the list, so go ahead now.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. Number one was hinging on the employee question there. You say you haven't had employees. What about all the cars parked along the roadway? Have you had friends helping you out?
No, there, there hasn't been any cars parked along the roadway except for when my husband's mom and dad died. His sisters came up and stayed at our house and that would be the only cars that were parked along the roadway.
Okay, thank you. So back to a question that I've got for staff is there was a email and a comment submitted by Mr., I'm trying to switch screens so I can bring. Claypool. And it was talking about the two things. One of them was the gate. Can you address anything on that, Abby?
So I will address the gate, but I also just want to clarify that these applicants, since they bought this property, I believe in 2018, they've never been authorized to cultivate on this parcel. So when there were accusations of illegal cultivate, unauthorized cultivation, we issued, code enforcement issued a violation. They provided photographic evidence documenting that they did not in fact have any plants in their greenhouses. And so just to clarify, that is, that's, there was no reason for them to have employees unless we could state that they did in fact unauthorized cultivate without authorization. And to answer the question about the gate, as far as I'm aware, when I conducted my site visit on January 6th, the gate was unlocked and there had been a dispute between Mr. Claypool and the Millers. And I believe at that time they were keeping the gate open. And I would have to look at the fire safe regulations, but they also have requirements of a locked gate. And if you'd like to, Chair Bongio, go back and ask the other commissioners questions. I can find the literature in the fire safe regulations about having a locked gate on the property.
Part, you, part of the question was, it was about having the gate off of Cabin Road. That was part of that email that was submitted?
Yes. So there, this is a really difficult question to answer because there was a settlement agreement reached between the two parties, which I read prior to coming to this meeting. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, but in that settlement, I believe you guys agreed that you were allowed to have a gate on the property as long as you provided them with the access code to, to open it whenever they pleased and also gave them authorization to share that code with people they chose to invite over.
That is correct, Abby. And it is an electric gate with a keypad. And they were even given the clickers to go in and out with easy access for them and their son, who is the handicap. And so that's why we made sure that it was an electric gate where he had easy access to come in and out to go to his parents' house along with the clicker to where he didn't have to worry about punching in a keypad or anything like that. And that was an agreement that we came to in court. Well, with the, with the in litigation, that's an agreement that we came to.
One last question for you, Abby, was I'm, we, with all of this that's gone on, did I remember hearing something about a third party working there, another permit or something like that?
So are you asked, so I did reference in my presentation that they were going to be utilizing a third-party processing facility for their trimming and such. There was an accusation that they had a third-party employee, as this person stated, living on the property. So during my site visit on January 6th, it was said that this gentleman was living in a trailer off Cabin Road. I, I did meet this gentleman and I asked the applicant directly if he was an employee. They stated that he was a friend who lived with them. I asked if he lived in the trailer on Cabin Road, which if he had, it would have been against county code. They stated that he wasn't living in the trailer. I, that is, I took that, I took them for their word. I conditioned the project such that the trailer would be removed from that, that part of the road, which it has been since. And part of the fire safe regulations requires an unobstructed turnout, which now that the trailer is gone, it meets that requirement. So I, yeah, that's, that as far as, as I can say without calling the applicant a liar, I, that's what I witnessed and I did my best to condition the project such that the neighbor couldn't make these accusations or didn't. I'm just going to let it go there.
I got you. Thank you.
You done Mike? All right. Next call, Melanie. Thank you. Melanie, you're up.
Thank you Chair. Most of my, I basically just had the questions about the employees as well, some of which have been answered, but I, I was just wondering if there was some clarification because I found it a bit confusing, the last minute changes that I think might have been made. And I, I'm just wondering if somebody can clarify whether we're talking about permanent employees or seasonal employees and whether the applicants are allowed to have any of either type of employee whatsoever with an approval of this project as it is today.
I, they, the applicant has stated that they will not have any employees. So the, the permit is being approved based on that fact. And I, Director Ford, if you wouldn't mind helping me out here, it would require, I believe, a modification to the permit if they decided to have employees in the future. Correct, Director Ford?
Perfectly said.
Can I interject for one minute too?
Yes, go ahead.
We, another, we have it, we want to have it completely set up on drip system also, which would help a lot to where you don't, you don't need employees for the amount that we have. And I know a lot of people who have bigger than what we have that can do it by themselves. And I, I strongly believe that my husband and I can handle it on our own with no employees.
Okay, so what we're presented with today then, any decision we might make would prohibit essentially the applicant from having any type of employee in the future? Is that correct?
That is correct unless they submit a modification to their conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Noah, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. Well, first I just want to thank and commend Abby Strickland. You're getting quite the working over for your first meeting ever, but you're doing great. I, I also just want to thank the applicants and, or Diana Totten because I mean, it really does help us as a, as a commission when, when we have these back and forth with them, just to be able to see them on a screen. I, I found that very helpful. I think if I were, you know, watching this as another applicant or applicant's agent coming up, it always helps to try to get yourself on the screen, not on the phone. All that said, I actually have a question or two for staff. For, it has to do with the hydrological determination. I, I don't have any reason based on the evidence, you know, that's presented in the staff report to question the determination you've made. But am I correct in seeing that there was no response to the referral letter to DFW? And if there wasn't a response, I guess my question is just to clarify, is the matter of, you know, reviewing and assessing whether a, a permitted well that's going to be used for cultivation should or shouldn't be considered connected and should or shouldn't therefore require forbearance? Is that not something that Department of Fish and Wildlife usually weighs in on or is it not their bailiwick?
Yeah, let me jump in on that one. Thank you Commissioner Levy. So there's two things to say there. One is we've got an understanding with CDFW that if they don't respond to something, it means that they don't have a concern.
Okay.
Completely overwhelmed with the amount of work that we have given them. And it not only involves commenting on projects, but now they're in the process of issuing stream and alteration agreements in response to all these permits too. So they're, they're busy. Some time ago, I think it may have been over two years ago, they came to the place where they stopped commenting on whether something is actually making a determination on whether they think something hydrologically connected or not. They do not find that to be within their purview or their expertise to make that determination.
Thank you Director Ford. That was extremely helpful and clarifying.
Anything else Noah?
I think.
All right, Thomas, you are the next commissioner. You there Thomas?
Sorry, my computer's making me have to like double click on it to unmute. So a couple clarifying questions and part of this is for the applicant. The reason I flagged the no employees thing just because I, I feel that it's, it's pitting yourself against the wall because if this is just cultivation, I believe you could legally have employees and I hopefully staff will correct me if I'm wrong, you could legally have employees with just an ADA porta potty as long as there's no processing on site. So I think that's, there's a lot of, lot of work to be done. So the clarifying in the employee definition, if you brought in a third-party consultant to say, come in and do your metric or fresh frozen, is that legal or is that, is that technically an employee? Because I, I've been told it's technically employee. And then the last question for staff is the way I'm understanding this is currently right now, there's no interim permit. So this project is not able to operate until it's approved tonight. And that's the last of my questions.
I will say, so I might need clarification on your question about the employees, but I will answer the one question, your final question, which was they are not able to cultivate until that we approve their permit tonight. They do not have a state license right now. They haven't entered into their LSAA agreement with CDFW, which would be required prior to them receiving a state license. So yes, we are approving their permit tonight, but no, they cannot cultivate until they have a state license. And Director Ford, you may need to interject here. I, I was, I am not aware of them being allowed to have employees as long as they have an ADA compliant bathroom. So maybe I can get some help there.
My, my question was if it's just farming, basically if it's just farming, you could have an ADA porta potty there to meet standards for employees and you wouldn't have to have a permanent facility as long as it's just cultivation and no processing on site. That's what I was trying to get out there.
That is correct.
Okay. And then my last question about employees, does third-party, say a company coming in and helping you with fresh frozen type harvest or a metric compliance weighing plants? I've been told by many people that's definition of an employee. So I just want to get this on the record because it's, I'm, I'm trying to make sure the applicant's well aware of everything because an ADA bathroom's about 180 bucks a month and you only need about four months.
So if people are coming onto the site to do anything related to harvesting, process or anything like that, that would be an employee. Which under the circumstances of this permit now is not covered by the permit. So they basically need to harvest, process and take everything off-site themselves under the context of this permit.
That answers all my questions. Thank you.
Oh, there we. Just muted me again. Sorry about that. I couldn't get my computer to unmute. So I don't see any other questions of staff? Or is there any other questions? Oh Peggy, you got your hand up?
I, I don't mean to beat this whole employee thing to death, but why do, why can't they have employees? I mean, people need to go on vacations and get sick and they do need help from time to time and we've never brought this issue up before. I thought the whole purpose of this industry was to employ people. Is it just because they need to bring a porta potty or they just don't want employees? That's the part I don't understand.
I could.
Go ahead Director.
So basically what we're talking about, Commissioner O'Dea, is what's in the project description. And it allows the public and, and the county and the state to understand and expect what's going to be happening on the project site. And, and so we often rely on the project description.
Can I, can I interject something real quick? Alan, when you're on with your mic and John and Director Ford's talking, getting feedback, it's hard to hear real quick, real clear.
I'll mute myself.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you. So what, what we're talking about, the reason this is such an important discussion is that the project description is what we use to weigh whether or not a project's in compliance. We don't write a separate condition for everything that happens on the project. Conditions mod, basically modify the project description. So if somebody's saying that they don't have employees on the site, it means that they won't have employees. And so then therefore, if there's a bunch of other activity going on associated with the use, then that's not in compliance with the permit. And may I say, from the, from the staff level, from an, a perspective of reviewing and analyzing this permit, having employees here is not an issue. So it's, it's really just that the applicant has said, and I think the question's been raised, that there aren't going to be no employees and the, the question is, is that really true?
Director Ford, if I could just kind of add to that just real quickly. I think the issue is that if there were employees in the project description, we would have been requiring proof of an ADA accessible restroom facility like Commissioner Mulder was talking about. We also would have required that they develop a parking space or parking spaces for the number of employees they need. And so because their project description is, does not include employees and they state that they won't be doing that or utilizing employees, those are not conditions of approval that were recommended. So that's the tie in as to why that, that's an important part of this discussion.
Thank you.
Did you call on me Alan? I, I suddenly can't hear Alan.
I'm sorry. Thomas, go ahead.
So I guess it sounds like the applicant's good with not having employees. It seems like all the findings are there for the conditions of approval. So I would, I guess I would make a motion to approve the, make all the required findings and the resolution that I have in front of me does not have a number. It just says 21 dash record number P O N 11744 with the conditions of approval attached. The modified, I don't have a copy of them, but I heard them and to approve the project.
Uh, this is.
All right, we have a motion. I know Noah would like to ask questions. So we have a motion out there. Do we have a second? We will allow for questions.
Oh, second.
So we have a motion and a second and I will ask for questions and Noah, you had your hand up, so go ahead. And I will ask for questions. And Noah, you had your hand up, so go ahead.
Actually, I was just going to say that I was satisfied and make a motion myself. That's all. So...
All right. Thank you, Noah. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask Suzanne for a little call break.
Right, thank you. Mr. Bondeo.
Yes.
Mr. Mulder.
Yes.
Mr. Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. McFaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Motion carries unanimous. So that brings us to Section G. And usually I wait a little bit longer, but it's a good time to take a break. So why don't we take a quick five-minute break and then we'll come back before we start on the public hearing section. So we'll be back in five minutes. Uh, Thomas. Okay, we're back to the commission. And I see Thomas has his hand up, so I'm going to go ahead and see what he has to say.
Just whenever you get to, before the Rising Goats, I just have some ex parte disclosure. Would this be the time or once you called the agenda item?
Um, you could go ahead now since you're already on.
Okay. I received, well, I'm in ex parte disclosure. I received a phone call about this project technically before I was even a commissioner. I had not been sworn in yet. I received another phone call today about it and I called the person back and just didn't disclose my opinion one way or another. Just listened to him. And then today, being as I was out there in August and I remembered the road, in my opinion, seemed kind of narrow on Ross Road. So with permission, I went out and just drove Ross Road by the project, turned around, snapped some pictures, and saw some interesting things. But I think the hearing has to open before I can disclose that. But just from what I read in the new handbook that I need to disclose that before the hearings opened, I was told.
You did well. Good job. Okay, so with that, thank you for disclosing that. And we will go to Section G, Continued Public Hearings. And the number one is Rising Goat Limited Special Permit on 1400 Ross Road, Garberville area. So I'll take the staff report. And I'd ask that the applicant wait till the end and then can speak to anything that either the commission or public brings up. Thank you. A staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Megan Ryan and I am the assigned planner for the Rising Goat Limited project. The project was originally scheduled for the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission hearing. However, due to lack of time to open the hearing, the project was continued to tonight. The proposed project is a special permit for 18,000 square feet of new mix-like cannabis cultivation. Processing will occur at a licensed off-site processing facility. Up to three employees are required during peak operations. Solar will be the main power source and generators will only be used as a backup power source. It is worth noting that while the application is technically for new cannabis cultivation, the site itself was verified to be in existence at just under 10,000 square feet prior to January 1st, 2016. An application for commercial cannabis under the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land Use Ordinance, or CMMLUO, was submitted and in process and until late 2019, at which time the property changed hands and the new owner was unable to transfer the application. By the time the owner was able to submit an application, the application window for processing pre-existing cannabis cultivation had closed because the property qualifies for new cultivation. An application for the existing cannabis operation is now considered to be new based on the time that it was submitted. The project is located on Ross Road, a privately maintained road that intersects with Alderpoint Road near the community of Garberville. A road evaluation report is included in Attachment 4 of the staff report. The Department of Public Works recommended conditional approval with inclusion of intersection improvements where Ross Road meets Alderpoint Road. This slide is showing the final configuration of the cannabis cultivation site as drawn by the applicant. This slide is showing an aerial image of the subject parcel showing the current site conditions. Annual water use to support the project is 366,660 gallons or approximately 20.37 gallons per square feet. There will be a maximum of three cultivation cycles annually. Water is provided by an existing on-site well and rainwater catchment. There is 17,500 gallons of water storage on site. The well is located in the northern area of the main cultivation site. The well is approximately 40 feet southeast of the single-family residence as shown by the well completion report. That's included in Attachment 4 of your staff report. And the well is approximately 307 feet southeast of a Class II water course located in the northern portion of the parcel. The well and the nearby water course appear to be at approximately 2,040 feet in elevation. The well is 20 feet deep with water first occurring at 50 feet. The well yields 25 gallons per minute. Planning staff determined that because the well and the water course appear to be at the same elevation and drilled through soil layers, including clay, that the well may be hydrologically connected to surface waters at the location of first screening, but that lower screened levels are clearly drawn from groundwater. Conditions of approval require the well be retrofitted to eliminate the upper screen, which occurs between 40 to 75 feet, and then a water meter be used to quantify irrigation water use. There are no special status species per the California Natural Diversity Database. Northern spotted owl and marbled mirelet habitat are located more than two miles from the subject parcel. Noise and light attenuation measures and no use of redenticides are required by the conditions of approval. A review of aerial imagery on the Hummel County Web GIS shows an existing grassland was expanded for cannabis cultivation between 2005 to 2009 and again between 2010 and 2012. A section clearing along the central portion of the southern boundary of the parcel was converted between 2012 and 2014. The applicant submitted a timber conversion evaluation report. The report found that approximately 1.85 acres of timber conversion occurred in two distinct areas with an additional amount of removal of white oak species. The report recommends road improvements, removal of soils, and restocking of the white oak species. Conditions of approval require the applicant adhere to the recommendations contained in the timber conversion evaluation report. Conditions of approval also require the white oak species are restocked at a rate of seven to one. The plan shall include monitoring for a minimum of three years and that requires an 85% success rate. The project was first scheduled to be heard by the zoning administrator on December 17th, 2020. Due to public comments received, the zoning administrator did not hear the project and referred the project to the planning commission. Attachment 6 of the staff report contains the public comments received prior to the zoning administrator hearing and staff response to comments. Attachment 7 of the staff report includes correspondence with the applicant prior to the hearing and correspondence with the public regarding the hearing date. Public comments have generally been regarding water use, noise, potential traffic improvements, and timber conversion. The majority of comments and concerns have been regarding the amount of water that is proposed to be utilized for the operation and the well's possible connection to water source and how that may affect adjacent landowners. As previously stated, conditions of approval require the well be retrofitted to eliminate the upper screen to ensure the water source is non-diversionary as required by the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, CCLUO, and to address public comments regarding the effect of the use of the well on neighboring properties. For new cultivation, the CCLUO prohibits the use of generators. For consistency with the CCLUO, conditions of approval require the applicant to submit an energy plan that shows total energy use projected for the project as designed in the final stage where all cultivation is mix-like cultivation. It is currently outdoor. A plan, and this energy plan would also identify the amount of solar or other renewable power sources to provide the entirety of energy needs. Intersection improvements where Ross Road meets Alderpoint Road will ensure the same road surface, in this case, which is gravel. And that will be used for the improvements. Paving is not required. And finally, implementation of recommendations contained within the timber conversion evaluation report address concerns regarding timber conversion by requiring the restocking and ensuring converted areas meet Forest Practice rules for conversion. In conclusion, Planning Department recommends the Planning Commission find the project consistent with the environmental impact report for the CCLUO. Make the required findings and adopt the resolution subject to the conditions of approval. Planning staff is available to answer any questions the commission may have. And the applicant and applicant agent are also in attendance at tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the commission have questions for Megan Ryan and any other staff at this time? Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
So I just want to make sure this is new cultivation. It's under the CCLUO. I understand all that. The backstory, in my opinion, is technically irrelevant because what it is, is it is a new application under the CCLUO. There is existing infrastructure and I see there's many conditions of approval, including building permits and other improvements that need to take place before operations can begin. And I hope the applicant is aware that no cannabis operations can take place until those things are taken care of the way I read these conditions of approval. I have lots of other questions, but I'm going to wait till after a public comment and... The applicant.
All right. Thank you, Thomas. Mike, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Bondeo. I had a question concerning the water and the linkage and all that. Where is that exactly addressed by the, from the public comments by staff here in the report?
Commissioner Newman, regarding the well, is that what your question is? The concern from the neighbors about the well?
Right, the well and being connected and the neighbors' aquifers and stuff. I just wanted to see where it was exactly here addressed as a comment.
Sure thing. Well, I can point you to condition of approval number four, which is the way that planning staff was intending to address the concern about the well potentially being hydrologically connected to the new water.
That's in the addendum number one. That's in the conditions. Okay, I'm looking at the addendum to one. And then I see number four here. Thank you so much, Cliff. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike. I see Thomas has his hand up again and then Melanie after.
Sorry, Mike triggered my comments because I'm just trying to... The condition I'm looking at, I did, the director mentioned something possibly other. But what I'm reading is condition number four. Prior operation, the applicant shall cause the well retrofit to install an additional blank at the current screen elevation from 40 to 75 feet. Is that what we're talking about? And if so, I have lots of... Okay, Mike. If that's true, I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not a geologist, but I have seen many wells produced and I don't believe that there's any way to hydrologically disconnect the surface that is already screened, most likely has gravel around it. The well that's most likely screened has gravel around it and I don't believe there's any way to hydrologically disconnect that 40 to 50-foot elevation of water from the water below it without filling the well full of concrete and drilling a new one. But that's, I'm not a well driller, I'm not a geologist, but that's my personal opinion.
Director, the director would like to comment to that.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mulder. That is correct. I thought we were providing a supplemental that evidently we didn't provide. But what we'd like to do is change that condition to read that the applicant has one of three choices. They can either demonstrate that the well is not hydrologically connected in the expert opinion of a hydrogeologist. They can dig a new well, cap that well and dig a new well that's not hydrologically connected. Or they can come back in and modify the permit to use rainwater catchment.
Thank you, Director. Hopefully that answers some questions. I see Melanie, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to say that I don't think it's only me, so maybe others can weigh in. But I'm having a very, very hard time hearing you, Chair Bondeo, as well as Cliff Johnson. And so I'm just curious to know as to whether others can hear while Alfred's at my end. That's all.
Well, we were getting a lot of feedback, so we turned down my volume, which is probably a good thing in most cases, but unusually loud. But I can turn it back up. I'm just afraid that we're going to get more feedback.
Ah, okay, yeah, it's quite faint.
I'll try, I'll try.
I would agree.
Okay, I'm working on it as we... Go up a little bit and see if that makes any difference. Does that make any difference for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so was there anything else, Melanie? Why you still had the...
No, it was just that technical issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions of staff from the commission? Seeing no hands up, I'm going to open this up for public comment. And after we have public comment, I'll ask the applicant to address any of the issues that they hear. So I see we have one public as of right now, public 7108. Please go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Bonnie Buckberry, a neighbor of this parcel. One correction, Ross Road does not connect to Alderpoint Road. It connects to the Darville Road. Okay, so I've put input in for three times on this. And in the beginning, I thought that it was a 1.0 permit because of the stuff about the generators. But then when I started reading over the 2.0, I saw where it says, "The energy source must be exclusively provided by a renewable source," meeting with the Performance Standards for Energy Use. And my understanding of the word exclusively means entirely, completely, totally, not mainly as is proposed at this point. So that's a really huge thing that I went through and tried to see after talking with Cliff Johnson about how they were looking at the performance standard. And that was justifying the... and that was just to find, uh, the generator use. And when I went on to the, um, source, uh, energy source for ancillary propagation facility or mixed light, that is for, that allows generators, but it's for pre-existing. So this is a new one, so it should come under the two point O, which says exclusively, must be exclusively provided by a renewable source. Uh, the thing with this generator backup or whatever, uh, it'll be used to supplement to solar power, as anybody who is off the grid with solar power knows. Generators are used to charge batteries. So if, um, the idea of growing three cycles of eighteen thousand square foot of mixed light for March to November at this location with exclusively solar is not realistic and would need the aid of generators to supplement the solar input, which I believe violates the energy source requirement, um, and, um, and why require electricity must be exclusively provided by a renewable energy source if it's intended to include generator use. Um, the county has, uh, not shown the ability to monitor generator use, to verify the actual use, so.
We have to wrap it up Bonnie.
Okay, uh, the water is a real issue and, uh, I think this, um, project should downsize outdoors and I support the, some of my neighbors that have been calling in about requiring this operation to forbear, we're, we're in a drought and it's a really big deal. So please, uh, whatever, have them participate in the forbearance period, thank you.
Thank you Bonnie. Thank you. Next caller is Ken. Unmute yourself Ken.
Ken Swawski, um, I, I would like to reiterate everything Bonnie said and I won't go over my timer, can even come close to it, but I, I do see an ongoing tendency to do site inspections in a non-relevant time period. Uh, the last permit, I was done in January and the guy didn't appear to be, uh, involved in things. And I also see a, a preponderance to staff to make determinations and I do not believe they have, uh, the qualifications to make some of the determinations they're making. Those should all be based upon wet stamped experts in the field and that alleviates any kind of a, at least you have a wet stamp, I mean, they're viable, we all understand how that is, but I, I really have some reluctance on a lot of these projects that are going forward in this, and again, what Bonnie says about the generator, I believe to be correct, I also wish to make a comment, uh, Thomas is new there, if, if, if you can make all of your questions regarding staff before we make our comments, there might be some very relevant things that you will bring up that we would need for information to address the project. So I strongly encourage that to be done prior to public comment rather than after, otherwise the public should have two bites of the apple as far as, uh, having an informed comment on these topics. So thank you for my opportunity and again, uh, everything, uh, uh, Bonnie said with spades, especially regarding the, the, the water usage and the generator issues in their neighborhood. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you Ken. Is there any more public that would like to speak on this issue? I'm not seeing anybody. Uh, there's another hand, Shirley Hillman, please. Go ahead Shirley.
Hi, um, Shirley Hillman here. I had thought that my neighbor was going to speak first before me and she's got more of the relevant data than I do, but I would like to express my profound concern about the use, the, uh, the proposed use of water. I am one of the six properties on one of the springs up there. The well is very close and I think Sue can speak to everything that she's done in terms of talking to the water board, to the hydrologists and to the experts. It really seems like that water is connected. We all, all six of us have one thousand gallons a day of deeded water from the state water resources board. I think maybe I'm next to the youngest one, uh, on that list and I've been here for twenty-one years. We have seen a profound drop in this, in the water in the last ten years. And as I noted in my letter, we have found a way to work together so that we all get water, but it is not a thousand gallons a day, the water is dropping. And I think that three hundred and sixty-six thousand plus gallons of water out of this well, that it is not clear to me is not connected is terrible. And I will also restate what I said in my letter, which is, we don't have the ability at this point in time to have an experiment here. We all live here, we live on our land and if the water goes away, our land is unsellable and unlivable. So I'm going to really encourage the commissioners to take a deep, hard look at this because I don't believe it's a good use of the water there and I'm hoping that this, um, person who would like to do this grow can find forbearance, can do a tank farm, can, uh, just change it up in some way, so we can all live here with the water that we have. And as far as the generators, what Bonnie said is so true. I've been here for twenty-one years, I've been in Southern Humboldt for over forty-four. Generators from March to November will be in use anywhere from three to six months of that time, there's no way around it. So, um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you Shirley. Um, next caller is, uh, last four is fourteen ninety-five. Public fourteen ninety-five, go ahead. You have to unmute yourself. Star six, there we go.
Okay, so you can hear me now?
Yes, speak up, speak clearly.
This is Sue Jacobson, I've, uh, written a bunch of emails.
We can't hear you Sue. You, are you still there Sue? Not sure, you're, you're muted, so try unmuting yourself for starters. Oh, I am, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sue, we're going to move on to the next caller because we can't seem to hear you. So, public seven four two nine. Unmute yourself please, seven four two nine, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, um, I just had a couple of quick comments. I think that, uh, the county, uh, we all, the county, um, planning department, the co- planning commission, the supervisors, the citizens, really need to reexamine this use of wells without regulation and the, um, planning departments, um, feeling that they know that a, a well is not connected or connected hydraulically, that I do think we need to, uh, sort of defer to more experts. And I have never heard of a timber conversion that involved white oak. So I'm kind, usually that was, uh, traditionally or historically used for clearing Douglas fir for cattle and to cut down white oak, which are actually the most, um, endangered ecosystem in California right now is oak woodland. So I, I think that needs to be looked at. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So is there any other public that would like to speak? Would the applicant like to speak at this point? Okay Shirley, I see you came back, so you go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say thank you for recognizing me again, that it is really imperative that you all hear what Sue has to say because she has consulted with the experts and I don't know exactly how to make that happen, but she did write, um, a very excellent letter that wasn't initially.
Have her call in and it looks, there is another caller, I don't remember if that's the same number, but.
Okay, good, thank you.
We'll give her, well, well, hopefully she'll call back, tell her, call her and tell her to call in.
I, I texted her, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, public fourteen ninety-five please.
Okay, are you, can you hear me now?
Yes, speak up clearly.
Okay, I just, uh, wanted to, I get it, I'm getting a lot of feedback, I don't know why. Okay, is that better? Can you still hear me? Okay, so, um, I want to say the residents of the Overland subdivision where this farm is planning to be, um, have written several letters now, we didn't hear about it until December tenth. So that indicates that there's something wrong with the process when the people who's, uh, are right in the neighborhood don't hear about it until it's a week away from being approved. So anyway, we also weren't informed of the EIR public comment period, so we were unable to make our concerns known at that time. And since we found out about this, we've done a lot of research and I'm really happy to hear that, uh, Director Ford has, um, given these stipulations to them because it's, it's a case that really demands forbearance in order to protect a watershed that serves fifteen other pieces of property, their daily household of water. These rights were, uh, have been recorded, the latest one's nineteen ninety-three. So, um, it's a big deal to us here in our neighborhood and with the drought, we had to work really hard to make sure the person gets their share of the water each week. And, um, we really can't lose that much water out of the office for, uh, for a commercial grow and still live our lives. So there's a, there's a real problem here and I'm glad to hear that you're going to address it. So, um, the generator problem is also big because they want to do three cycles and three cycles, uh, in, at this elevation and in this climate means they're going to need more than what solar planner panels are providing because every day that it's raining, that generator's going to supply the power. And in the summer, every day that we're overwhelmed with smoke from wildflowers, that, that generator is going to supply the power. So that's going to be probably more than twenty percent. Anyway, just wanted to let you know our concerns and, um, I'm speaking for the whole neighborhood, people have signed on with our correspondence to you. So, um, thank you for your time and I appreciate having a chance to make our concerns known.
Thank you Sue. Let's see, is it, so I'm seeing no more public at this point, so I'm going to close the public comment unless the applicant would like to speak. I've been hoping that the applicant would put their hand up, but I haven't seen anything, so. Oh, well, is he under panelists? Oh, he's under panelists, that's why. Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment and I'm going to bring it back to the commission and I will let Paul, the applicant, speak. I just wasn't seeing him as an attendee, it was, he was under panelists, I apologize about that. Go ahead Paul. Unmute yourself please. He just disappeared.
I think I'm on there now.
Okay, we can hear you, go ahead.
Good. Um, I want to correct a couple of things that were submitted, uh, to planning previously. Um, one, we're doing one cycle, not three, we've adjusted that. We've switched to drip system, which cuts the needs for water nearly in half, approximately a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand gallons, as opposed to the amount that you're looking at there. And the other thing is, I am surprised that the public comment concerning water appears to be a fear factor of going forward, what will happen with regards to the quantities of water available for everyone. This property, this is not a new grow, although we had to go to a two point O because we could not get an assignment from the prior, uh, prior owners with an application, a one point O in process for almost two and a half years. The question that comes to my mind, is this property has had grows, obviously non-compliant grows since the early two thousands, often much bigger than what we're planning and no one has complained about a water problem. Why would it change going forward when we're actually growing less than has ever been grown before? Those are questions I have and, uh, please, also, one of the options John Ford gave was a hydrological, uh, report submitted to the county. My question is, do we have to come back for an amendment to whatever is approved tonight? Who has the approval authority on that report?
We'll let the director address that.
Thank you.
So if that comes back and, uh, a hydrogeologist is willing to put their stamp and signature on, on something that says that the well is not hydrologically connected, that satisfies the condition that could be approved by the department, it requires no further action by the commission.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you Paul. Um, I see Melanie has her hand up, so go ahead Melanie.
Yes, thank you Chair. I have, uh, a few questions about, uh, the electrical consumption. And generally, I just wanted to say that I think it would be more helpful to have more detail on a lot of these projects. So just having something state, for example, that it'll be solar powered or, or not, is not that helpful unless we know how many kilowatt hours, um, are used per month. It's really difficult for me anyway to try to figure out whether solar might be adequate if I don't know how many kilowatt hours they're using per month and how many solar panels they're planning to put in and I couldn't find that information anywhere. Um, the other thing is that, uh, to me, twenty percent isn't really an emergency usage basis. Again, I would really need to know how many kilowatt hours we're talking about here, uh, but twenty percent's, you know, not a, a small number. So, yeah, so, uh, I mean, twenty percent can be a small, small number, but, uh, we don't know what the numbers are. So I guess that's my main question, how many kilowatt hours are we talking about per month in terms of their current usage? And how many solar panels do they plan to put in? Once we have that information, then we can actually make the calculation as to how much they might be using their generator, which is pretty much, um, the question that most people have at this point, uh, because we don't want to have a generator running all the time. So if someone could answer those questions regarding the kilowatt hours, average per month number of solar panels, uh, solar panels planned and, uh, then we can start to talk about how much the generator might be contributing given that it's twenty percent. And, uh, then we can start to talk about how much the generator might be contributing, given that it's 20%.
Does anybody from staff want to tackle that one?
I, I can take a shot at that, um, Commissioner McCabre, uh, so we don't know how many kilowatt hours are going to be needed. Uh, we don't know what the power needs for the, the project, and so, um, while we have a-
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I really am having a hard time hearing you. Is there any way you could, um, raise your volume?
Is this a little better? I'm kind of trying to- Is that better? A little, no?
Hey Cliff, can you turn up the gain?
Is this a little better right here? This is, this is up all the way.
Sounds about the same, yeah.
I may be able to address some concerns regarding the energy plan. Uh, so the conditions of approval are requiring the energy plan to line out the information, um, Commissioner McCabre that you're talking about, so we don't have that information in front of us. The clarification that was made in, uh, one of the, um, public commenters spoke to it, is that the, allowing the 20% generator use is for pre-existing cultivation projects and that this, uh, because of the time when this application was submitted, it's treated as a new cultivation project, which does not allow the use of generators. And so the use of the generator would really be for emergency purposes. That, what that percentage is, or when or when that cannot, or should occur, is not defined. And, um, maybe we could, uh, the commission may want to define that a little more, but it is really intended, um, in this case, to not be used for the, uh, operation at all. And so in the final stages of the operation, it has to be all renewable.
Okay, thank you, uh, yeah, I, I, I really can't work with something like that personally. I mean, we have no idea how much we're talking about for that 20%. Unless we know how many kilowatt hours the applicant is using per month and what, how many panels they plan to put in. I mean, we really would need that information because otherwise a 20% may not be a small number.
Yeah, the, um, uh, the, the CCLUO does not allow the use of generators. So they, the permit does not authorize up to 20% of use of a generator. No generator is allowed for the, this operation.
Just to be clear, you're, you're correcting what was said in public comment because that does not apply to this project?
The, what, yeah, sure, I see. Yes, so the, the clarification is, in the CCLUO, up to 20% is allowed for pre-existing only. This application is being treated as new cultivation, no generator uses, use is authorized.
So not even on an emergency basis?
The, um, the project description does indicate for an emergency basis, so that's why I was saying that portion of what that is, is not defined. Um, and one of the public commenters spoke to requesting that be removed entirely from the project description.
Uh, well, I think that at the, at, yeah, that was very confusing, that, the, the previous, um, discussion. But in, in any case, I think that we really do need to define what an emergency is then. Um, I, I think that's something that we could consider doing as a commission if, um, the planning department, you know, doesn't have something down on that. I mean, you could argue all kinds of things are an emergency, I suppose, so, um, and, you know, some of the, uh, commenters have brought up some important points regarding the number of emergencies, you know, having gone up in recent years as well. So, yeah, I'd like to see how we could possibly define emergency, I guess.
The director'd like to have a comment on this.
So I would just like to add before we try to define emergency, and it's not that, that's not something that should be considered. But the premise behind the ordinance is that, uh, an applicant would be required, as you have asked, to demonstrate that their renewable energy source is capable of providing 100% of the energy. Period. But just, but just like anybody else, if for whatever reason, something happens to the renewable energy source or, um, it's unavailable, then that's when an emergency backup could be allowed.
Oh, okay, uh, thank you very much, Director, that's very helpful. So they will be required to put the number of panels in to meet their current or projected, uh, monthly kilowatt hour consumption then?
Correct.
Uh, okay, well, that makes a big difference. Um, we still have a, you know, monitoring issue in the county, of course, but, um, that's, yeah, that's very helpful, that certainly puts my mind to more ideas, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie, uh, Thomas, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so at this point in time, I have lots of questions, but I gotta clarify something with the chair. It sounds like in term where we can ask questions and also state a- Correct.
I, I could barely understand what you were saying, you were kind of digital sounding. I don't know what-
At this point in time, we can ask questions and also formulate opinions of those questions, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, first thing I'm, I'm gonna, the first culvert crossing, I came across on this property, there was a black poly pipe running through a culvert to the, uh, smaller cultivation site. It looked like it was, I stayed on the road, it looked like it was running towards the smaller cultivation site that I believe is closest to Ms. Blackberry's property. I don't know north, southeast or west there. But you could, when I stopped and turned off the truck and got out of the pickup, I stayed on the roadway, you could hear the water line was under pressure. So it would make me believe that that was tied to a gravity source at some point in time. There may have been some sort of spring or something like that, that that black poly pipe was connected to. I then proceeded to see a, what looked like a two-story structure from the roadway with the generator, large generator, I mean, I took a picture of it, it was at least a 25 KW on a trailer, maybe 45 KW, in that average size. Then there was a dumpster with garbage in it and flowing out the side of a dumpster. And you'd see the smaller cultivation site. Um, lots of garbage there, trailer, camper type thing. Then you continue on down the roadway and you see another culvert, you pass the entry to that site, it's still on the property, and there's another culvert in the had, uh, one, it looked like about a one-inch PVC pipe going through it. So I'm just wondering where all these water lines are going. You get down the roadway, still on this property, right below the cultivation site on Ross Road, and the bank right below the cultivation site is gushing water. It's a probably about the equivalent, it hasn't rained for a few days, it's probably about the equivalent of about an inch and a half big waterfall gushing out of the bank into the ditch. So I feel that, I'm not a geologist, I'm not a geologist, but I feel like there's a lot of water going on there and that there needs to be some sort of hydrological measure, we are permitting something, um, permitting something that is going to be detrimental, because I'm having a hard time meeting a finding number four, um, with the water source and all of that things. When we have to do finding number four, that's going to be detrimental to the- Uh, I can't find it right now. It's not going to be detrimental to the rest of the surrounding neighborhoods with the amount of- I, for, I would have a hard time making that finding from what I see, just driving down the road without even visiting the site, personally. Um, so I think we need to add some more conditions onto this project, especially related around water. Um, maybe on the lines of Florence, maybe even on the lines of, I'm not even comfortable with one hydrologist signing off on existing well because the detriment to the whole Oxnard subdivision, I think there needs to be two hydrologists to sign off on that existing well personally. Those are just opinions I have out there. Maybe it would be better to modify this project to just outdoor only, so there's, there would only have, uh, nursery, drying, and those type of capabilities. Um, I had, I have one other, oh, this existing storage, I read in the staff report. Or somewhere, it might have been in the operations plan, 5,000 gallons of that existing storage is supposedly for fire suppression use only to meet SRA requirements. So I don't believe we can legally count that 5,000 gallons of water. And that's the last of my notes for right now, sorry to talk so much.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Mike Newman, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, um, I, uh, wanted to double check about the difference that the applicant said that they're doing one cycle as opposed to three cycles. Um, can you comment on that, Meg?
Um, I was not aware of any proposed changes.
So this, um, report is based on three cycles, so all of the findings in here is based on three or one cycle?
Three.
So how much does that cut things down on water usage, electrical usage? Um, and all of that, um, to make a difference on what we're talking about here quite a bit? I, I like the idea, um, I, I was grateful that Director Ford, um, talked about the, uh, condition four, um, on the recommended conditional, conditions of approval, about having a, a licensed hydrologist to sign off on it, that it is not hydrologically connected with, uh, the rest of the watershed there. Because that is important for the neighborhood. But how does one cycle make a difference versus three cycles that were in the report?
Well, according to the information I had, um, with the three cycles, 366,660 gallons, if you take that divided by three, um, because you're reducing two cycles, would be, um, 1,000, uh, 122,220. So that essentially would be a third, I think I heard the applicant say, that's the water needs in half.
So that condition for the hydrologist, licensed hydrologist would be, um, talking about that type of usage, or is it just, period, the connection?
Uh, just based on the connection.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Noah, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, um, well, I've been, I've been waiting to speak, uh, all along because I was very concerned about the amount of water being drawn from a well with so little storage. But I'm, I guess I'm even more concerned or just a little confused when, um, when the applicant comes in and describes a, a scale of a project that is, that bears very little resemblance to what is in the staff report. I mean, we're evaluating what's in the staff report, um, and it does say, you know, up to three cycles of mixed light, and it says storage of 360,000 gallons of water. I mean, it, that, I was concerned, I should say, by the scale of it, at least the scale of water usage. Um, and I, I share somewhat the concerns about power usage for three cycles. So I'm, I'm, I'm relieved, as it were, or reassured that we're now being told it's one cycle and only about half of that projected water use, but then it sounds like we're not evaluating the project we thought we were evaluating. And, and I'm, I'm puzzled, like maybe this one isn't ready for approval, maybe we need to have the applicant work out with staff what scale this project really is. That's, that's kind of my somewhat frustrated comments here.
Uh, Peggy, I see you raising your hand, I don't see it on there.
Um, my question too is about water usage, I'm not an expert, maybe somebody else can screw me up a little bit, but this one seems to be, I, I just watch them as they go through and they're usually about six gallons per square foot. This one's 20.37 gallons per square foot. And I also am curious about, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with solar in areas where there's not a lot of sunshine in the winter. How do you, um, you know, what kind of solar pump are people using to keep the, this amount of water, um, coming out of these wells, even in the neighborhood? Um, don't they have to use generators during certain times of the year to run their pumps to, um, pump that kind of water? Because solar's not going to work in the wintertime, I, I ran a few water systems and it's kind of problematic unless you have-
Anybody on staff want to address that?
I could at least respond to the gallons per square feet, I do think that, um, the, the 20.37 gallons per square feet is higher than what we typically see. I think the calculation made for that did not take into account all three cycles that are occurring. And so, um, you know, the, the water usage number is for all the whole operation. And so I think that that, it really, if you take that and you apply it to the three cycles, you're, it's more looking, um, just about 7.8 gallons per square feet per cycle. Which is typically, uh, what we would see in other projects.
I could, thank you, answer the second part of that, um, it is a good question. The solar arrays would be, need to be designed to have some kind of storage so that generators are not counted on to be a primary power source even during the winter. And, and so that has to be part of the design, it has to be part of what's presented. And, and so do you understand the, the concern there? And that's something that would be helpful, or the commission can look at?
Thank you, Director, uh, Thomas, you have your hand up?
Well, you, you have your hand up on your screen, so I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak before me.
Okay, um, I think Noah, uh, just brought up a really good point and hit it on the head. Uh, this has kind of turned into something that wasn't even what the staff report said, and the, the applicant said, one cycle versus three cycles. Um, this is maybe more a question for the director, I, if it's not what we're, what you proposed to us, it's, it's changed, can we vote on this tonight? Or should it be sent back to come back? I mean, it is less than what the, the project is asking for, so I'm assuming that that means that it would be okay, but it seems like there's a lot of questions that should be addressed, and so I'm wondering if this shouldn't, so that we, you know, approve something that isn't what it is, or, uh, not approve it and all his work be, or not, should we send it back and let you guys get it right and bring it back to us?
So it is entirely within the commission's purview to be able to act on something that is less intensive than what was evaluated within the staff report. However, if there are things that have been said tonight that create concerns, that the commission would want to see how that is actually worked out and finalized and put into a final form. Um, and it would be appropriate for the commission to give direction to have those things clarified and brought back.
Thank you, Director, that answers my question. Uh, go ahead, Thomas.
Um, Commissioner O'Neill asked a question about like water use tonight. Willing to spill the beans on some things if, uh, it's appropriate, being as the question was asked during this agenda item.
Go ahead.
Okay, so when you're asking water use, it's, I'm in the industry, you're, you're going to get, it's going to vary on cultivation style, but a safe, uh, guesstimate is, uh, three- You're, you're going to get, it's going to vary on cultivation style, but a safe guesstimate is 350,000 to 500,000 gallons per acre. That should be a safe variance. I think you should kind of weigh in on. And also it is possible to do three cultivation cycles via outdoor under county code. 100% depends on your strain, depends on your elevation. So without any artificial lighting in your cultivation area, you can pull three runs. And you do not use as much water on your runs in April. Like whatever you plant in April, it doesn't use very much water. And when you're finishing it up in October and November, you're using very minimal water because the humidity is very high and the temperatures are very low. So the water used, you can't just times it by three or whatever. But now that I'm on the commission, I'm sharing that with you. So there was a question asked in this agenda item, so I figured, thank you for letting me answer it.
Thank you. It's good information.
I appreciate it.
Mike Newman, I see you have your hand up?
So one other thing besides the one cycle from three. He also, the applicant also mentioned about changing to a drip system. So I, with the conditions that were brought forth in the attachment one and the amendment that we should have gotten with the three, what were they called? The three different variations for question number four, which was about the water usage in the well, about it being connected or not connected. And if it was connected, it needed to have a new drill, to drill a new well or to modify the existing well. The staff report was showing that it was affirmative or okay with the three cycles to a certain degree, depending upon this condition right here, uh, number four that was modified that Director Ford brought forth to us. Is there any way of showing that on the screen to everybody what that amendment is?
Would you do that, Meg or Director?
Yeah, I actually need to write it up real quick. I apologize for that. I can work on that if you would like to deliberate more.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners that have questions at this point why the director gets that information? Seeing no more hands, I see Paul has his hand back up the applicant and I asked him, oh, go ahead, Thomas.
So one other thing I did hear was, um, the applicant spoke about size of cultivation, that this was this going to be the smallest, the cultivation, smaller than some of the larger cultivations that ever taken place. And then I also heard in the staff report, there was multiple conversions of timberland. So I'm just curious if staff could dispute that or refute that, or I don't know what your terminology would be. But yes, it seemed from the staff report, it seemed like what's there is going to be the largest that's ever taken place, not the smallest, that's smaller than what's taken place.
I, I could try to address that, Commissioner Mulder. Can everybody hear me a little better?
You sound better than you did before.
Thank you. Um, so as Megan Ryan had mentioned, you know, this was a, a 1.0 application at one time. And so staff did verify that before 2016, there was as much as 10,000 square feet of cultivation occurring on the property. And so that's, so that's the extent of the previous cultivation area that we've been able to verify is 10,000 square feet. And so this application is, if you read in the staff report, actually proposing to phase, where the first phase would be 10,000 square feet and then they would expand up to 8,000 square feet extra to the total of 18,000. And so in our view, that 8,000 square feet is, in addition to anything that we've been able to verify was occurring on the property. The timber conversions were all, and Megan Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe before 2016, the one that is of concern for us with the white oak, I believe was on the south portion of the property. And my understanding is that it may have actually been a trespass grow and not necessarily conversion that the previous property had done. So again, 10,000 square feet is pretty much what we had confirmed was there before 2016.
Thank you for that clarification. That's what it sounded like, but it just, that was a big, interesting statement. So thank you.
Any other commissioners before I let the applicant speak? All right, Paul, you're up. Are you there? If done, mute yourself.
It got me. There we go. Um, there is a person who's possibly on your public list. Her name is Alicia Heitzman and she, she's from Natural Resources Management. And she's a consultant to the project who would like to answer some of these questions.
Uh, yes, I, I see her when I look over there. Alicia is there and we will let her speak. We're going to bring her over as part of the panelists. Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Would you like to address anything else or do you want her to do that?
I'd like to address a comment that Mr. Mulder brought up. The 5,000 gallon tank is not a part of the existing tanks. Uh, CDF requires us to put in a dedicated tank of 5,000 gallons for sire, fire suppression, along with a T turnaround that will benefit that whole neighborhood. So it is not part of the existing water storage. The lines you saw likely, I, I wish I could have met you there, but the lines I believe you saw are lines that work, that run down the hill from our water tanks that are up by Dyerville Loop. Do you have a question? It looks like you have a question on your face, Mr. Bongio.
Can I comment back to that, Alan?
Go ahead.
Uh, the coal, the water pipes I saw, this, this was, uh, below the cultivation areas. So it was culverts, not on Dyerville Loop Road. It was, it was, uh, culverts right before what I would consider the driveway to the cultivation area. And the culvert just passed that cultivation area headed down Ross Road.
Um, let me.
I have pictures I could email.
That'd be great. Um, the water well is just inside the gate where you park. The water tanks are up on Dyerville Loop. Those, the, all of the storage is up there. The water is pumped from the well up to those tanks where it's stored. And then the lines bring it down to the property. So we use gravity flow. And those are likely the lines that you saw. And of course, everything has to be corrected. The site work has to be done to, to satisfy the county. So any of those lines that are going through culverts have to be cleaned up and we intend to do so. That's it.
All right.
Unless you have other questions.
Thank you, Paul. So I'm going to let Alicia Heitzman speak now?
Hi, thank you so much. Yeah, Alicia Heitzman, our Natural Resources Management. Paul, um, so technically we have been, um, doing the water board and fish wildlife permitting for this property since 2016, but it's had, I think, uh, three different discharges at this point. So it's been changed a lot of hands. Um, so I just really quickly want to talk about the polyline. I know Paul just talked about it, but, um, so there's the culvert. That's right before like what you, I guess, would consider the driveway that goes to the main cultivation area and the house. I think that polyline is probably still in use. It just, the polyline has to cross that road to get to the cultivation sites. Um, although I believe the polyline going through the culvert down past the cultivation areas is probably old. Thomas, you, um, mentioned there was that shipping container full of trash, um, which I also have seen on my site visits. And it's something that we're, um, working with the growers to get cleaned up. And so I think that polyline is just also historic. It's not currently in use. Um, and then I, uh, think that, um, doing the hydrologic study for the well, if it's, you know, shown to not, shown to be connected, drilling a new well would be, um, best. And I can't imagine that if the water usage is going to be the 140-ish thousand gallons that's now being estimated with the new one run grow. I can't imagine that that being taken out of a groundwater well would be an issue. And I, um, from what I've seen, I don't think it would affect the neighboring properties. And then, uh, lastly, the item that talks about the replanting, um, from the timber conversion, there's in the, uh, it's, it's worded, um, that you'll comply with the report prepared by NRM, um, and sticking to the restocking rate of seven to one. We, we actually recommended a restocking rate of three to one. There's not a whole bunch of, um, space on the property. And, uh, we were kind of just hoping that it might be possible to do a little bit of enhancement, um, of existing oaklands rather than 100% restocking. I'm just not sure if there's space on the property to do that. And, uh, yeah, those are all the items that I would want to talk about. Thank you so much for your time.
Stay with us, Alicia. There may be some questions for you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Thomas, I see your hand up, so I'm assuming you have a question.
So the one run thing, it's something new and it, I studied all this information, but I saw, from what I saw from the road of, from Dyerville Loop Road and from Ross Road is hoop houses. Not very often do people pull, do full term one run in hoop houses. So can we clarify if this is going to be plan a light depth in May? You know, first of May, pull tarp and be out of there in August, which some people do in impacted watersheds. And they pull that first run and they don't grow anymore of the season? Or is this going to be full season, one run, full term, no light tarp, or night, light depth tarts?
So I think I might have misspoke. I said run. I meant one phase because I know that in this staff report, it's saying three phases. And Paul, maybe you can speak to this, but I think it's just, sorry, I meant to say one phase rather than three phases.
One phase.
Yeah.
Uh, with harvest in October.
Does that answer your question, Thomas? All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, that answers my question.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions for the applicant or Alicia, his consultant? All right. Thank you both of you for being available. So I will bring this back to the commission. Do we have?
What about the director?
Oh, the director. Yeah, that's right. The director was going to give us some information. You ready?
I'm going to share my screen. So this is, uh, condition four and a red line strikeout, uh, version. Read prior to operation of any cannabis activity, the applicant shall complete one following. And, uh, the first would be to present a report from a qualified hydrogeologist that determines the well and its current screening intervals are not connected to any surface water features, including, um, I need to move my, uh, things here. Sorry. Including what? Including local springs or B, to cap the existing well and dig a new well, which has been demonstrated by a potter line, hydrogeologists to not be hydrologically connected to any surface water or see, receive approval from the planning commission of a modification to the permit to allow rainwater, um, connect, I'm sorry, rainwater capture as a source of water or collection.
Director, do you mean to require rainwater collection?
Yes. That would be the third option.
Cause it says allow, yeah, okay, yeah.
One quick comment, sorry. Um, is it possible, just because we never really know what the future is going to hold, would it be possible to add a fourth option of doing all forbearance, like doing water from the existing well to storage?
No, this project cannot, um, divert from any, uh, surface water or water that's connected to surface water.
Okay.
Thank you, Director, for that clarity.
And if I could just follow up on, on that last question, if I, if I understood what, um, Alicia was asking, I think she was asking, in the event that a, um, that it's found to be hydrologically connected, it would not be permitted, the, the option of, of the landowner to put in tank storage to pump out the required water from the well ahead of the forbearance season and then forbear, that would not be sufficient to meet our requirement. Is that correct?
That is correct. Under 2.0, that is a diversionary source of water is not allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Director. So any other questions from the commission? Anybody want to venture a motion on this?
Well, I, I will say, oh, sorry, Melanie has her hand up. I'll, I'll be quiet.
Oh, thanks. I just had a question about the, the rainwater catchment. It was my understanding that we weren't, um, I won't say asked to not allow that, but it was something that I believe is to be brought up with the supervisors at some point. Is that still the case?
If, if it is, that slipped my mind. A rainwater catchment is something that's encouraged currently at the state level and, um, water board, CDFW, and by the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up?
Um, just in my notes here, when, uh, Alicia was presenting that they may have a hard time following, fulfilling the conversion, um, restocking requirements. And maybe I might have misheard. Maybe it would be appropriate if to shrink the project down to what it was originally at its largest to 10,000 square feet of new versus 18,000 square feet. So that way those restocking requirements can, um, be met because we have to remember, uh, I think all of this has to meet CEQA. I'm, I'm very, very new at this. So that one project earlier that had all that environmental documents, it was like, oh my gosh. So I just, that might be something to think about, um, to make sure CEQA has met that those restocking requirements are done. And maybe to do that, 10,000 square feet may be the appropriate size, just throwing out an idea and asking a question.
Would that be a question for you, Director?
If, if you're asking a question, if the commission finds that inadequate mitigation for the, uh, impacts to timberland or to the, uh, oak woodland, um, and want to shrink the size of the cultivation and require that that mitigation be provided in areas that are proposed for mitigation, that would be within the realm of the commission's discretion.
Thank you for that clarification. Does that answer your question, Thomas? All right. Uh, any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Does anybody want to make an attempt at a motion on this one? Thomas, I see you have your hand up again. Or maybe, well, it was and then it wasn't. Okay.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm not quite ready to make a motion. Um, I was just going to say, you know, Thomas's last question. Well, you know, I I I'm not quite ready to make a motion. Um, I was just gonna say, you know, Thomas's last question is is questioning whether we might want to lower the limit on the cultivation area to ten thousand. I mean, I I'm I I I this this one makes me a little uneasy um because it has, it it appears to have reduced its 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 scale and its impacts from what I thought it was going in, just in terms of the number of cultivation cycles and the amount of water consequently required. So I guess what I was going to say, although I certainly want to hear out Thomas's concerns, I mean, I was going to say that in my opinion, it it felt that we had um heard about and and heard the the mitigations or the responses to to many of the concerns, that some of the concerns about the scope and the water use are are now not not relevant or not operative. Um and so I was satisfied to go ahead and um move approval. I just wasn't quite sure. I guess I just wanted to make sure that we're we're um capturing the fact that what is described is the somewhat scaled down version of the project we've been discussing, not the not the one described in the original staff report. So that's not a motion. It's it's more just testing the waters if we if we are ready for a motion.
Trying to raise my hand. There it is.
I'm I'm sorry, Mike. I'm gonna, if you don't mind, give me a second before it's something I I just raised my hand ahead of you and and I've been thinking anyhow, and the director just made the the same suggestion is that we um postpone voting on this one and send it back to the uh director and staff to come back with what this project really is. Uh, and um because it's it's changed all night long as to what we originally had in our staff report. And so I think that would be the appropriate thing to do with this one. So it comes back as what it actually is, and then we will be making a decision on what the facts are. Um so that would be my suggestion. And that's also what staff would like to see happen. So I will open it up to the commission to ponder that idea. And Mike, you were you were next, so go ahead.
And and that was what I was going to um propose was to bring it back at the very next meeting. Uh, is that at all possible, Director Ford?
That is possible.
So I would propose that we uh bring this back at the very next uh meeting with the changes that we've discussed, going to one cycle, uh drip system in there in the report and the um alternatives on um the recommendation, the conditions for approval on number four uh polished up uh with what Director Ford had shown us there. And I would I would like to see it at that point. And I think it would be a very faster um meeting uh for this particular permit. That's what I would like to move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second his uh, that was Commissioner Newman's motion. I'll second that. And on top of that, I'll answer Commissioner Levy's uh question. The only reason I was good with the down scale, but the only thing that triggered my question was the report that they may not be able to meet the restocking requirements and conversion evaluation. So then that triggered, I don't know CEQA like the rest of everyone here. So then that triggered my question. Um, and that's the only reason I asked the question.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this? Seeing no hands, I will ask Suzanne for a question.
Thank you. Chair Boncio?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, the motion carries and and we'll have this back before us at the next meeting. Thank you, uh, everybody. Oh, go ahead, Director.
Just just to be very clear, that would be the meeting of February eighteenth, so that if anybody's listening or watching, this will be brought back on February eighteenth.
Thank you for including that. I should ask that specific date. I appreciate that. Uh, that was a a good discussion on that that one. Okay. Um, that takes us on to uh section H, which is new business. And the McGuire Jerry Coastal Development Permit, uh sixty-seven sixty-six West Avenue Fields Landing Area. I would ask for a staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen. How to deal with this new PowerPoint? Apologies for the delay. Okay, let's try this. Can everybody see that okay?
No, we're not seeing anything. Well, I'm not.
No, we're not seeing it.
Okay. One moment.
I don't have it.
It looks like, yes, there we go.
Okay. Let me turn it into um Okay, sorry about that delay. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Tricia Shortridge. I'm the assigned staff planner for the Gerald McGuire Coastal Development Permit. In this presentation, I'll discuss the issues related to this project and how and why staff is recommending denial of this permit. Uh, the request is for approval of what's already been done without permit. The work done without permits may not be up to code. And I would like to present the following issues. Uh, there's four of them that I'm focusing on. Uh, the first issue is uh that this coastal development permit is an after the fact uh permit application uh requesting um you to approve uh what is presently there. Uh, the application was submitted in response to a notice of violation and abatement. And it's also been very difficult for staff to get an adequate project description, uh which was not submitted until a year after the initial application and fees were received. Uh, the second issue uh is that there's a long history of code enforcement violations on this parcel and uh the applicant uh will not resolve them. The third issue is um that a project should not be approved.
Excuse me, can can I interject something? Is there, are we changing the screen at all or are you supposed to be?
I will be.
Okay. I thought maybe you had some points with what you were talking about.
Yep, I'm just gonna add, I'm just gonna give you this quick preview and then I'm gonna switch the uh slide here shortly. But um there's a long history of code violations on this property. Um, and then the third point, um, a project shouldn't be approved if there's existing code violations. And then the fourth um is that the existing structure cannot be permitted. It doesn't um comply with the required yard setbacks in the zoning district, and it also does not comply with the county flood damage ordinance. So I will switch slides now. Um so the proposed project takes place on a a parcel of a little over um a tenth of an acre, point eleven. Uh, the site plan up in the right corner shows a um sixty by sixty configuration of the lot with the building building footprint of the proposed house located. Can you see my arrow moving around, my cursor arrow? Okay. Um so basically, the proposal is to lay out a uh two-story house up against the rear lot line um one foot from the lot line on on the street side of Central Avenue and a six and a half foot front yard setback off of West Avenue. There was an original, the the original house was built in nineteen fifty-two and it and it was uh built with this footprint. The two-story portion of the house that was original is here where my cursor is moving around. Um and in nineteen sixty-two, there was this uh one-story port addition that was put on. Uh, so the buil- building footprint in this aerial view isn't very clear uh because the entire house was demolished and partially rebuilt, all without permits. Uh, this aerial photo was uh taken around twenty-ten. So this is a view of the house or what the property looked like back in two thousand and seven. Staff found department records documenting the unsafe and hazardous conditions of this property dating back to two thousand and four. There were four building permit applications submitted, starting in the year two thousand and six, to clean this up. Extensions were granted and still the applications expired with no inspections conducted. Yet, even though the planning department continued to work with the applicant, um a slab foundation was poured over a weekend without approval. There was continued interior remodel work going on involving electrical wiring, wood stoves, installation of a gas water heater. And also in a recent discussion that staff had with a very concerned citizen who owns some property in that neighborhood, uh, I was informed that the property had actually been blighted since about two thousand and one. So this slide shows uh the various code violations that have been ongoing since two thousand and four. In July twenty nineteen, uh code enforcement unit issued a notice of violation and abatement with civil penalties. In response to that notice of abatement and civil penalties and violations, the applicant submitted a coastal development permit application in August of twenty nineteen, a month later. The application was complete when it was submitted, incomplete, I apologize. Uh, a letter was sent to the applicant informing him of what was needed. And uh, we received the requested materials over a year later. In December of twenty nineteen, uh, the app, the hearing, the applicant did appeal the notice of a violate notice of violation and abatement with civil penalties and the hearing officer upheld the county's uh notice of abatement. Um after after the application became complete, staff gathered all the department records. Uh, and it became apparent that the structure lost its status as a non nonconforming structure, which was what the original application was requesting with the with the zero lot line footprint, the one foot from the side lot line and the six and a half foot front setback, the applicant was requesting that he get approval for rebuilding the house in that same nineteen fifty's footprint. However, um, let me turn this over. However, uh, so in August of twenty-ten, um, one of our building inspectors discovered that the entire house had been torn down. Uh, basically, that's when the nonconforming status of this house was lost. The right to continue the use of a nonconforming structure may occur under uh um on with no structural alterations unless required by law or or through a building permit or if it's uh destroyed by an act of God. So this demolition was conducted without the proper permit, so it further exacerbates the uh loss of the nonconforming status. So just showing a comparison here, in addition to the property being in the same blighted condition as it was in two thousand and four when we first started documenting the issues, uh there's been additional unpermitted structural alterations, further exacerbating the 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 nonconforming uh status loss. Uh so a project really shouldn't be approved if there's existing code violations on the property and uh the structure that has been built here uh was built without permits. So demo happened without permits, uh rebuild happened without permits or happened without the the proper uh uh building inspections to monitor construction. Permits to construct were originally issued in two instances, but uh they expired without any um without any inspections happening, yet the applicant continued to to develop. So in addition to the existing code violations, building health and safety, um the the other reason why the project should not be approved is uh the proposed design with the year the zero yard setback as shown here or or here um is not consistent with with the residential uh single-family zoning district development standards. Uh the property to the west of this would have a two-story wall adjacent uh basically eleven feet away from from its building, from its house. Um, which would pose a nuisance to the neighbor. Uh, also in uh this other diagram, these yellow uh areas are what's called a site visibility triangle. Uh West Avenue and Central Avenue are is an uncontrolled intersection, meaning there's no stop sign. And it is difficult to pull out onto West Avenue from Central Avenue with no stop signs with the line of sight blocked. And this poses a hazard to the neighborhood. Staff did find that it is possible to support a variance of the Staff did find that it is possible to support a variance of the required yard setbacks with a redesign of the site plan. And the applicant was notified of this possible path forward, but refused. I did a little sketch of what the building would look like in its, with the standard setbacks. And it's possible that a house could still be put there, inside the standard setbacks. So another major issue is that in twenty sixteen, this parcel became part of the FEMA one-hundred-year flood zone. If the reconstruction of the house, or the remodeling of a structure exceeds fifty percent of its assessed value, the structure must comply with the county flood ordinance. This means the applicant must redesign the elevation of the home in accordance with a flood elevation certificate from a licensed engineer or surveyor. And because the slab foundation was poured over a weekend without approval, we don't know if this foundation would hold up under flood conditions. The applicant's been notified of this, but refuses to acknowledge that a redesign is needed. And these are some recent pictures of what is currently on the property. This covered structure here is actually the interior, these two pictures are the interior of this that is covered in plastic. So in conclusion, even though the staff provided the applicant with a path forward through a potential variance process, staff still does not recommend approval of this CDP with conditions that might require the applicant redesign and go down the variance path. And the reason why staff recommends that that doesn't get approved is because of the applicant's unwillingness to clear up the existing violations on the property and provide modified plans in order to accomplish the suggested path forward. And so based on the evidence of the ongoing current and historical violations of the Humboldt County Code, there's blight, unsafe conditions, and a hazard to the public health, safety, and welfare, staff recommends denial of the project. And with that, I'm concluded here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would anybody, any commissioners like to ask a question? Peggy, I see you have your hand up.
Okay, I can totally understand why you wouldn't want. Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
I can hardly hear you, but my question is, I understand not approving, moving forward with any new permits, but what do you do with the existing problem? Because obviously, what's there now is not acceptable. Do you move to, on a separate action, to have them demolish what's there or abate what's there?
So if I could, thank you for the question, Commissioner O'Neil, is that this is a property that's right in the midst of a code enforcement action. So either the applicant will clean up the property and clean up the violations, or the county will.
That hopefully answered your question, Peggy. Any other commissioners that have questions? Thomas, go ahead.
This one's for the director. I've asked this question as a public commenter, but now I can ask it you. You said this is in the middle of a civil penalty action. Can the county use monies made through the abatement process to pay to clean up that property if that action does go that far?
So Commissioner Mulder, the county does satisfy money in terms of the department's budget each year to do abatement actions. And that money does come out of prior fines and penalties that have been collected.
I thought so, but now I actually thank you for the answer.
Any other questions? Seeing done, I'm gonna open this for public comment. Looks like we have one, two attendees, but I'm not showing. Otherwise, it's not allowing me to show who they are. Oh, there we go. Okay, so the first one is, I'd ask that the applicant wait till the end, just in case any thing that's brought up, you may wanna address. So I'm gonna ask the second caller, it looks like Kent, go ahead.
Well, I wish to point out, we're still heading toward nine o'clock, and I did not pull a single thing off of consent tonight, that I'm aware of. Yeah, there you go. And I did wish to thank staff for this. I strongly support staff recommendation on this particular topic. Will make no derogatory comments toward anybody involved in this process, other than to compliment staff. Thank you for my chance to compliment, I think, on the last issue for tonight.
Thank you, Kent, appreciate it. So I will now let the applicant speak. Go ahead. Kent, unmute, there you go.
Hi, I'm actually not the applicant. My name is Brittany McGuire, his daughter. He was gonna speak after me, but I would like to say something on public record.
Go ahead.
As I said, my name is Brittany, I'm Jerry's daughter. That being said, I'm not gonna sit here and pretend to know all the details of the issue at hand, but I would like to share my perspective on this. My dad's just trying to build a home. We've been sitting here for three hours now, listening to people talk about how they wanna get permits and approvals to build grows and marijuana grows to make profits. My dad's trying to build something to live in. He just needs a home. He's a retired man in his sixties. He's living and doing all this work on a limited income. Only thing he has committed is social security. He's just trying to make ends meet. He's doing most of this work himself in his spare time. The majority of his time is spent as a primary caretaker of his elderly parents. If you force him to tear down and restart this, you're gonna put him in a financial hardship, especially during these difficult times. We've got winter weather conditions and COVIDs. You're basically condemning him to live without reasonable living conditions, which is one of our rights that should be available to everybody. He's not asking for handouts. He's just asking for the city and his commission to follow through with the plans they've already approved. You guys have approved previous plans. That foundation that you said was poured overnight was approved. You just need to allow him to finish the construction in a reasonable manner. He's been doing his best to comply with all the things put forward by the city and has all the intentions of addressing all of your concerns going forward. He's done several things that have been asked of him. We have a list compiled together of the things that have been asked and the stuff that he has done, the steps he's taken to do those things that he's done. And what's being asked of him takes time, not something he can do overnight, it's something that's gonna need time. But he's also being told different things. He's getting unclear information and conflicting information from the staff. We also have proof of that. Further, can I really treat any? Did you, can I have a question? Okay.
We're losing you.
I'm sorry. So he's also being unfairly targeted and treated in a disrespectful and unprofessional manner. And he's faced several hurdles going through this process. You talk about a blighted manner of this area. There's several properties in Fields Landing, I'm not sure if you've driven around there yet, that are in a blighted state. There's also the street that you're talking about that has no controlled intersection. That's a dead-end street with very limited traffic. And I don't think that's supposed to be an issue at all. But I'm not a homeowner, and I don't say I know all about the codes and permits. I am a college graduate in environmental and natural sciences, and I work for the federal government, in which I help manage to plan and to limit environmental impact and degradation in our national parks. In my opinion, if you force him to tear this down and restart, it's gonna cause way more environmental impact than just finishing what's already been started. And it will continue to not only cost him money, but also the city and the county. It's also gonna add increased stress and fatigue, both mentally and physically. My dad's been a proud member of this community for over sixty years and has built and helped build several public and private structures throughout Humboldt and has given back to this community in more ways than one. He's installed a sense of environmental stewardship and is in responsibility to three children, including myself. My dad's not asking to cut corners or cause negative environmental impacts. He's just trying to finish his home in the means possible for him, and is committed to addressing your concerns in a clean, successful project with a support network behind him. I'm asking you, it's part of the county's of Humboldt's mission to provide equal access to services programs to all of our community members. I ask you, what would be so wrong about letting my father finish cleaning up this parcel and finish building a home to live in? I'm asking you to treat him like you want to be treated in return, with respect, dignity, and perhaps a little bit of kindness in these trying times. I'm asking you to allow my father to move forward and finish his home in a timely manner. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Do you want me to raise my hand and then raise my hand back up when my father would like to speak?
Well, this is his opportunity right now. I mean, there's no other callers, so. Yes, go ahead, Mr. McGuire.
One thing, you've led a whole bunch of misinformation from Tricia. I was not informed of all this here stuff happening right now, so I'm a little bit, at some point, a little bit confused what is happening in the sense that this is a hearing towards condemning my house or whatever, because she has absolutely refused to deal with me, talk to me, or even give me any information by mail, by phone. I was in there dealing with her for the agencies at least once a week for the last three years, it seems like. Now, to point, this project was started and it was permitted. I have the permission and everything, which I'd like to submit to you guys and all this information, which basically kind of reacts to anything that code enforcement, or which she's been saying, because it's not true. You know, it's an opinion that she's taken from day one. She was supposed to come up with a variance, which this property was permitted. It was, the slabs are all inspected by engineers. There's nothing that is done wrong. Code enforcement has basically, from the very beginning with my other property that they tore down illegally, has managed my whole project. Throughout this whole process, it's been, man tore my house down, and then he micromanaged what I've been doing to this point. They've had several different code enforcement people deal with me. Last one, everything was fine, I have water. The condition of the property is because they stopped me working. There's nothing done that's not to code. Everything I've ever done, I'm an engineering contractor, I have an A license. I mean, I know what I'm doing. These people that are dealing with me are inexperienced to the point where they don't even know what they're looking at in the sense of what is right, wrong, to code. They're making up their own rules as they go, their codes are made up by themselves. And it can all be, I have all documentation, which I need to submit. I didn't know how to submit it, because I did this hearing, which is all brand new to me, as far as in time-wise. I mean, I just found out about this the other day. She's had three different, in one week, she's had three different dates of this meeting. So I'm lucky to actually be here, rather than being fooled into the way they've been treating me for this couple of years, misinformation even to me, or not talking to me. Now, at this point in time, all the things he said about my property down there is not true. It was permitted. Everything to this point was under permits by the planning department and the building department. The condition of it is because they stopped me working to continue the plastic, even when I put the plastic over it, because they say, I mean, it's gonna rain the last couple of years. So they put plastic over it so it doesn't destroy what you've already had established there. And at that point in time, they stopped me even doing that, because they're building something, not building anything. I'm just trying to save what I already had built. Everything was permitted, everything was done to code. And they've basically done nothing but harass me since a prior house, which they tore down. I'm getting a little bit excited here, I'm sorry. But it's all permitted. He says none of this is permitted. Her job was to get, look at the property after like seven years of trying to get permits. All these permits I had, I had three of them, that they took from me illegally, because you have five years to get a permit process finished. They take my permits within a year. Why? Because code enforcement tells me to do something, which I follow. And at that point in time, the building department comes in and penalizes me for what I'm told to do. Each agency is micromanaging my projects, so I'm doing what they tell me to do, and then I get penalized for it, to the point of it sitting the way it is right now. Nothing is done illegally, nothing is done not to code. Everything is done, except for the way the yard looks, because they stopped me. Every time I start cleaning up down there, they stop me. They come down with new regulations, new rules. They come up with rules that aren't even, they don't even conform to the ones that the county of Humboldt abides by. You know, and all this stuff, like I said, when I submit all this stuff, you'll see, everything I'm saying is true. Tricia, she's like the third person, they finally get somebody who comes in and does this to me again, when her job was to start with, was to do nothing more than get a variance. The building department, they still to this day allow, in their opinion, from what I've been told to this point, the footprint that was built there, it's the accent footprint of what it was, the original house built in, I think, nineteen forty-nine or something like that. The rules of the county allow you to, they allow me to do that, and it was permitted. I keep repeating myself with this permit process, which I have. There's nothing done illegally, except for when they say stop, I stop. The place looks like it is, because they say stop, I stop. And then they come up with these new rules, and the rules are, they're not what their codes are. You know, I mean, as an engineering contractor, I've been building forever. And a house, to do something, everything I've done is to code. These pictures they have, they're pictures of, you know, I mean, I lost my main house, primary house of forty years because of these, because of what they've done to me. So what I'm saying basically is, I need time, I'd like to submit all this here evidence and show that what you're saying is not true. And the way they've treated me, it's all documented. I mean, like I said, I didn't even know about this meeting until like two days ago, or something like that. And then it's to give me three different dates of this meeting, and I'm lucky that I followed through and tried to find out, and then third time, found out that the meeting was tonight. And that's the way she's been treating me. If you don't communicate with somebody, how are they supposed to respond to you? And then I don't respond because I don't know what they're even trying to get done or whatever? Does that make sense? I think it does. But at this point in time, you know, I didn't even know what you guys really do, as far as what we're doing here, in the sense that you make a decision, or do you follow through with what they're doing against me? This is all brand new. I have an architect and an engineer who worked on this project. He didn't even know about this stuff, because Tricia there refuses to keep us informed this whole, it's supposed to be a three-month process, it's been a year and four months now. And Rob has never been informed on any of it. Yet, I'm the owner, builder, engineer, and at that point in time, I know what I'm doing, but I'm doing what they tell me to do. And then you get somebody in here that's gonna penalize me because all this information is misinformation. And it's like, it can all be proven, you got all the documentation, I got all the paperwork, I got and all the stuff built has been approved. The slabs are, an engineer stamped on them, I got the documentation. They don't even wanna listen to, they just, they don't. Anyway, so what I'd like to, I'm hoping, at this point, since this is all new to me, and I'm just now finding out what this is even about, I'd like to submit my documentation to your agency or your council committee, I'm not even sure of it, because you can actually look at and see this stuff and realize, and make a judgment on the call. It'll be basically fair to all parties involved. Would that be able to happen? So you can see all this, you know, this process has been going on since seven years now. And all these permits and all this stuff, I have tried my best to get all this stuff, and then they stop, and make sure that I have to stop. It's almost like a personal thing they've done to me for all these years, which I don't understand, but quote-unquote, every single person involved, including the head guy of the code enforcement, who basically started all this, say that somebody doesn't like me. That's his reason for tearing my houses down, somebody doesn't like me. That's not a reason to tear somebody's house down. That's a quote-unquote, that I will stand by and document it, that's the reason for doing this. I mean, it's crazy, but all they wanna do is build this place. I've been trying to get this thing built for seven years. It would have been built, except for they took my permits within the time period that would, should never have happened. Permits are good for five years, you have to have inspections, they were inspected. They don't honor these inspections. So there's no reason, at this point in time, that they don't, let me have my permits back. I've been trying to ask them, seven years, I'll pay for it, that's not the problem. The condition is, there's all these code violations, I'm writing I'm right now at this point here, actually, uh, doing everything that they've asked me to do as far as, bring it up to the code enforcement, uh, compliance. I am complying, been complying for a year and a half. But they still haven't given, released the ability to get the permits back. And as soon as they say, okay, this thing's, it's built in a month. It's only six hundred square feet. There's nothing done illegally. They'll get their inspections. They'll have an engineer or whatever that, what they'd like to do. They have their own inspector. They can have them. And it's all, the next process is just to inspect what's there. Continue and continue the inspections, do it all legally. Uh, get rid of all the crap that's, and they look ugly. I don't like living like this, but they're the ones who forced me into this lifestyle by refusing to let me continue. Every time I start continuing.
We need to wrap it up, sir.
Well, are you willing to, are you guys going to take this information I have? Uh, can I submit it someplace?
Well, that should have been done before tonight. I, if we were going to see it, so.
Until, until yesterday. I mean, if, if they're going to tear my life apart, at least you, you have the ability to let me know when the meeting is, and she did not do this. This lady has, has not given me any information on any of this project against me, for me, or anything.
The director would like to chime in on this. Go ahead, Director.
You know, um, if, uh, the commission, at the commission's pleasure, if, uh, he would like to submit information, we will continue this till February eighteenth. We will meet with him and look at whatever information he has and, uh, bring that back. Um, but this is a circumstance that is not caused by the county. This is based upon complaints from the community. The community is upset with us and it's dragged along as long as it has. I get free to have calls on this a week.
Oh, bullshit.
It is something that does need to be resolved.
Well, I believe that we should deal with this tonight. I believe that the, uh, information should have been brought to us tonight if we were going to do it. But with that, I will, uh, it looks like we have one more, uh, caller I see that would like to speak. So I'm, uh, before I close the public comment, I'm going to let this last caller and then bring it back and see what the commission would like to do. Uh, the caller is Brian Riley. Go ahead, Brian. Are you there, Brian? You have to unmute. You did it for a second.
All right. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of points for you guys to think about. He did have a permit that expired. We permitted to remodel and renovate this place. And the other thing is we didn't have enough notice to put together stuff for this meeting. And I never got any information on the date or how to hook up to it. So I think, I think putting it till the next meeting would be the only fair thing to do so we could prepare. I've been doing permits since eighty-two. I've never seen a mess like this one, ever.
Anything else, or is that?
That's it.
That's it. Thank you, Brian. Uh, I, I'm going to let the applicant speak one more time, but we need to move on. So go ahead, Mr. McGuire.
I, I realize why, maybe you, 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 you sound, I don't know who you are, but you have this thing wrapped up tonight. We just, I just spent about three hours listening to pot growing bullshit. I hate to say this terminology, but that's what it was. I mean, pot growing. I mean, is that what this county comes to? When you want to get homeless and then you want to deal with these pot growers because they have more money or something? There's a point where there's very unfair situation has been dealt on me for seven, eight years now. I've lost my primary house. I've lost the house down the street. There's a, an accumulation of six hundred thousand dollars I've lost because code enforcement has pulled this here hatred against me. It's almost like a hate crime, and yet we'll have to sit, I mean, I'm sitting here four, three, four hours about pot. Pot growers. I mean, come on.
I would, I would.
Go ahead.
Now, here's anyone listening to this. That's bullshit.
Um, so it's me, Brittany, his daughter speaking. Uh, I would just like to read a, a direct quote from an email that Tricia actually wrote. Um, and I'm, I'm going to be quoting her now. I appreciate the time and effort you're putting into this, Brian. It's not easy for anyone. I wish Jerry the very best, and I feel like I've done him a disservice for letting this project get out of control and not providing extremely clear direction from the start. It could be very straightforward and we should be done with this by now. End quote. To me, that's Tricia saying right there that she has done him from the beginning, vetting him misinformation, misrepresenting this project and, and herself saying that she's done a disservice to my father. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission. I see we have three hands up, and Mike Newman is the first one. Go ahead, Mike.
So I, I would, um, like to bring this back to the next meeting and hear what the applicant, what Mr. McGuire has. I realize sometimes things can get out of hand. Um, I'm looking at all the things. The last thing I'm looking at is page thirty-nine of, um, the code enforcement, um, inspection, uh, dated five, seven of twenty nineteen. It's outlined with several different things there about inadequacy and structural hazards and all of that. So, um, I would be willing to go the little extra mile here to hear some more information and see what can happen on this and then make a decision at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Melanie, your hand is up.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, before the, um, uh, the proposal of, you know, just basically bringing this back in the next meeting, I was, I was wanting to ask the applicant if they were interested in the alternative that we have, uh, in terms of doing something tonight, which would be to have some sort of agreement to remove all of the trash and unpermitted, uh, structures from the property and give the permit, the coastal development permit. And then they would come back with either the plans for the, the smaller one thousand and fifty square foot home or for a larger one with a variance. I'm just wondering if the applicant has a, has a preference as to whether they'd rather delay this or, or do that tonight.
Well, we can ask the applicant, I guess, that at the end, but let's get through our questions first and then we'll go, we'll ask them one time. Uh, Thomas, you're next.
Um, before I, is it possible to have that question answered before I even speak, or is that not appropriate?
Okay, um, I'll go back and I have no problem with that. I'll ask, uh, Mr. McGuire to once again address us, and could you answer that question that Melanie brought up?
Uh, the variance was supposed to be done already by the.
You have to speak up, sir.
Okay, the variance was supposed to have been done by, uh, Tricia. The, uh, the material and all that stuff, I, I don't mind cleaning up the place. There's most of that out there. It's just building material. Once I'm allowed to build this thing, it's all built with the material that's lying around. It's not lying around. It's all new stuff. These pictures are a little bit, you know, it's not like that right now. Um, so I, I'm, I'm not quite sure what, uh, I don't want, I don't want.
Uh, to, just to clarify, the question was, would, would you be willing to have a timeframe in which you'd have to do all the, the cleanup? And then, um, would you be willing basically to build a house that's a thousand square feet more or less? Or are you looking to build a larger one, in which case you would need to, um?
Have the variance.
Yeah, get the variance and.
Yeah, I had the place cleaned up in a couple of days. Uh, the, uh, house itself, the, the, the slab's already done. The slab was done under the permit and it's, I mean, there's, it's two foot, the footings are two feet.
Barely hear you.
Well, what is the size, uh, sir, that you're planning?
This is, well, the, the zone finishes about six hundred square feet. The rest of it.
Oh, well, then in that case, I mean, we do have the alternative to give you the coastal development permit tonight and then uh, with it, with a timeframe to do the cleanup. Um, and in which case you wouldn't need to request, uh, the variance.
Yeah, and then see that the building department, they just tell me I have to go through this and they'll give me a permit. They're, they're okay as long as I get the okay to continue, the building department. You're more than welcome.
So that's something you'd be interested in then?
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So, thank you, Mr. McGuire, and, um, I'm going to bring this back to the commission. So, uh, Thomas, did that help you? You said you'd like to hear from him before.
Yes, it did help me, although I don't know if there's some confusion because the way I understand the alternative is all existing structures would have to come down. And then all garbage would have to be removed. And then a new structure roughly in the middle of the said partial would have to be constructed. The way I understood the staff report and the requirements, I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page applicant wise.
Would staff like to confirm that so that we're all on the same page?
Commissioner Mulder is absolutely correct.
Correct.
For bringing that up, Thomas and Melanie, you both got that. Okay, Noah, you've had your hand up.
Apologies. Um, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I basically am, I just wanted to say I am, I am not at all comfortable with the alternative of, of giving the coastal development permit. Um, I, I think this, this, this application is, is in a bit of a mess. Um, I, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the applicant, but I also, um, you know, he, he, he puts all the blame on the county and, and Tricia and, um, I'm, I'm not buying that there is not responsibility and error on the applicant's part here. Um, I'm hopeful that it can be resolved, but from, to my mind, the best way to resolve it is to go along with the staff recommendation that we deny this tonight so that the abatement order, which is in process or pending, can go forward so that a new permit can be sorted out. Um, that said, you know, while I'm somewhat skeptical that it's going to resolve the issue, if, if there's other commissioners in favor of, um, you know, I, there's new information being offered that might change our disposition, I'm, I'm open to, I'm, I'm amenable to, you know, continuing this for, till the next meeting and, and resolving it then.
Uh, Thomas, go ahead and then I'm going to follow you.
Just the idea of continuing, there's already another item continued in the, the last year I've been following the commission, the more you continue, the more things get backlogged. So just, I'm, I'm good with making a decision, whatever way.
Thank you, Thomas. Um, I'm in the business of doing construction. I've had projects that get extended uh, when they run out of their time. This county does notify you. Uh, it sounds like that has been done from what I understand. It's just that it hasn't been, um, maybe dealt with right. Didn't go in to get the extension. The county allows those to a certain extent, has to be done. I don't know all the circumstances around this, but I have a really hard time believing that it's went this far and he had no idea that any of this was going on. I, I don't want to see this get extended. Uh, Thomas is, for being on one meeting is dead on what needs to happen, that we need to deal with these issues. The information should have come to us ahead of time. Um, I was getting supplemental stuff as late as ten minutes before the meeting tonight. So if he wanted to get it in, any information into us, it could have got to us. I don't like that practice, getting it that late, but that's how we get stuff. I, uh, I, the only thing I would like to know is, is, uh, if he did actually have permits and if they did expire. That's the only thing that would, would interest me in extending this. But I think that that could be handled tonight. The director just gave me the, that he'd like to speak. Maybe he can answer that question. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, Director, go ahead.
Thank you. So we did, uh, outline the permit applications that have been filed. Two of them actually resulted in permits. One of them expired before any work was done. Uh, one of them, uh, was under the circumstances in which the foundation was poured. And it should be noted very clearly that that permit was to allow a remodel of an existing house and a new foundation. It was not to demolish the house and reconstruct the structure. That would not have been allowed. It's in the coastal zone. So basically, what had happened is the applicant, the, for the building permit, told the building department that they were going to jack up the house, pour a new foundation, remodel the interior of the house. And what ended up happening is the house was demolished and a per, and a new foundation was poured without allowing a county inspection. We have no idea how deep the, the footings are. We have no idea how much steel is in there. We have no record of anything.
Thank you, Director. Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
So I'm ready to make a motion to adopt the resolution to take the following actions. Find the project exempt from environmental real rule. State Secure Guidelines, Section fifteen, twenty-seven, zero, comma, two. Find that the coastal development permit is inconsistent with zoning ordinance and will be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, and deny the Gerald McGuire coastal development permit after listening to the director's report on that this deconstruction would have never been allowed if it was applied for back in, through, uh, back when the permits were originally issued.
So we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Melanie, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately the outcome is, uh, you know, the desirable outcome will be attained either way. So, um, the, the applicant, I assume, can come back once, um, the abatement is completed and try to apply for another permit. So I'm, I'm fine with this.
Any other discussion? So seeing none, I will ask Suzanne to. Yes, Noah was the second. Thomas was the first, Noah was the second. So I'll ask Suzanne to do a roll call vote.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Banjo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
No.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabre?
Yes.
Motion carries by of will and I thank you, Suzanne. All right. So, moving on, that brings us to, uh, adjournment. But I'd like to ask a question of the director before, um, we get there and maybe there'll be some questions from somebody else. I, uh, a few meetings ago, we asked, uh, for you to pen a letter to go to the supervisors, asking them to make it a requirement of projects to come before, that coming for us to have been vetted for easements and rideaways and such.
Yeah, proof of access.
Proof of access. I know you're a busy man. I just hadn't heard anything from you, so I just thought I'd, I'd ask a question. And, um, that's about all I have. I see Melanie has her hand up, so I will go ahead and.
Oh, that was from before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up now. Or was that?
This, where you're allowed to make closing comments kind of, or is that not?
Um, feel free. We don't usually do that, but we ask questions of the director and such.
Okay, I just, in following the commission for the last year and noticing the projects even tonight, there was one project in particular, it had letters of support from neighbors. And it seems like every project that has been contentious does not have support from the neighborhood. So maybe, it may be a good idea to have early notifications on projects over ten thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet. And it may speed up the process in the planning commission meeting. Just throwing out an idea, I just, I'm noticing when there's big neighborhood concerns, it really slows down the process and, uh, it, being a good neighbor goes a long ways. That's all I'll say.
I would agree with that. I think that the, the strongest way to get to that kind of a result is to get area plans like we've seen in certain areas. And it, it makes it very easy for the commission when the people of that particular area have already, um, got their wishes and desires of what happens there, you know, on record. So that it's no mystery when they, you know, come out in force and say, no, that's not what we want in our community or yes, that's what we support. So that would be, in my opinion, the best way to go about that. But I think it's a good point that he brings up, that if we can get it out to the public as soon as possible, that'd be great. Uh, Mike Newman, go ahead.
Well, and that's what the community plans are about, especially in the built up areas, um, such as, um, Blue Lake, Field Brook, you know, some of the other county areas, the community plans. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes it's hard to get those, uh, people together to talk about specifics. Um, that's been part of the bugaboo. So, yes, I agree.
If, if I could just jump in, yeah, real quickly, I mean, I, I, it's kind of jumping on the bandwagon, but I, um, Bonnie Blackberry made that point earlier in the meeting that, uh, it would help the process immensely if neighbors could be notified at the time of an application or, or early in the application process rather than when it was perfected. Um, I know this is the end of a meeting, it's literally nine thirty-one, uh, and that's a big change to propose, but I think that's worth discussing further in future and maybe considering that as a recommendation. Thanks.
Bring it back to the commission.
All right. Thank you, Director. So, anything else? Well, if not, we'll consider this meeting adjourned. Everybody, we'll see you in two weeks. Bye-bye. Good job tonight.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.